It is four P M on Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand and twenty five, and I'm going to call the Iowa City Conference Board Meeting. Roll call, please.
Iowa City Council members present, Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Here.
Harmson?
Here.
Mo?
Here.
Salie?
Yes.
Teague?
Here.
Johnson County Supervisors, Green Douglas?
Here.
Green?
Present.
Fix Marores?
Here.
Remington?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
And Iowa City Board of Education, Abraham?
Here.
Easton?
Here.
Everybody's here, we've got a quorum.
Awesome. Well, welcome to all of you joining us today in City Hall and of course, to everyone that's here in the council chambers. We're going to move on to item number three, which is a motion to approve minutes of March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four, conference board meeting.
Second.
Moved by the county, seconded by the city. And any discussion on that item? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
City Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
County Green Douglas?
Yes.
Green?
Aye.
Fix Marores?
Aye.
Remington?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
School Abraham?
Yes.
Easton?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number D is fiscal year two thousand and twenty six budget. The purpose of this meeting is to set a date for a public hearing on the Iowa City Assessor's proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty six.
So our proposed pack budget is in your packet. It's pretty typical to what you see every year. About eighty percent of our budget is related to personnel. In salaries, we've budgeted a three, three point four percent increase for cost of living, and the staff would receive percentage increases based on merit. We do have one appraiser position that's currently open due to the retirement of a longtime employee. And I have reduced the budgeted amount for that, so that offsets some of the increase. Other items, postage and printing are down because two thousand and twenty six will not be a reassessment year, so we don't mail out all the assessment notices that year. Workers' compensation premiums have increased. They increased quite a bit last year and they increased some more this year. Not based on any claims, just typical insurance, I'm sure you're aware of. Same thing with our auto insurance. We didn't, I didn't need to change the, our auto line had enough in it, but it had increased quite a bit also. Other increases, software maintenance, that's our appraisal software provider. I just have it budgeted right at the amount that they're charging us. Same thing with dues. We also have a new aerial photography contract that was signed, and we split that cost with a few other offices, but that's going to be, our portion will be twelve thousand five hundred for the next eight years. In general, I mean, that's, that's the main items, I guess, to cover. The proposed budget shows a total increase of forty seven thousand two hundred fifty eight dollars or three point seven four percent. There's an increase of two point three percent or twenty three thousand eight hundred seventy five in the amount that would need to be raised by taxation. Other than that, I guess I'd just like to thank my evaluation committee of Molly Abraham, Mandy Remington, and Bruce Teague for meeting with me on January twenty fourth, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
I want to say thanks for taking your time going through the budget with us again. Even though I've been on there a long time, it was still helpful, but for the new members, Director Abrahamsen Supervisor Remington, I think it was very nice to kind of go slow through that process, so thank you. And for the record, if you can just state your name and position for those that don't know you.
I am Brad Comer, the Iowa City Assessor.
Great, all right.
Mayor Teague, I have kind of a process question. I have some interest in discussing with Brad at some point in this meeting how changing the coefficient of dispersment outcomes might or might not offer us a better or worse revenue situation, and I don't know if this is the right time to bring that up or if there's a better place in the agenda to have that discussion.
I think maybe on item G, you can bring that up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right, all right. Any other comments to the proposed budget? Can I get a motion to approve publication on proposed budget?
So moved, Harmson.
Moved by the city, seconded by the county? Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Green Douglas?
Green?
Aye.
Fix Marores?
Aye.
Remington?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abraham?
Yes.
Easton?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, now we're on to the second G, which should be H, all right, and then board comments.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to ask Brad a couple of questions about the coefficient of dispersion measure, which is in your report, and thank you very much for a report that's well put together and of course, responds to, I think, to some of the suggestions about the way it's presented. I found it very easy to read and to understand, so thank you for your work there. The coefficient of dispersion, as I understand it, is a measure of how close assessed valuations are to sale prices for individual properties. Is that about correct?
About. It's, it's how, how, it's the, so one calculation we do is our median sales ratio, so we'll figure out how our assessments compare to sales. Like if a property sells for a one hundred thousand and we're at ninety thousand, that's a ninety percent ratio. We look at all of our sales, like this year we had around eight hundred sales. You line all those ratios up and find the middle ratio. That's your median ratio, so I think for this year, we're at ninety point seven two, if I recall correctly. The C O D is the measure, how, how, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to sound very smart right now probably, but it's, it's, it's kind of like a standard deviation from that median, so it's, the lower the number is, the closer you are typically to that median ratio, which means you're assessing equitably. And that's our, probably the most important goal for us, so when a market's hot, our median might be dropping, but that doesn't mean we're doing a bad job if our C O D is still consistent with, with how our assessments compare to that median.
Well, my interest is not in figuring out if I think the assessor's office is doing a bad job. My interest really is in trying to determine if we, if we are assessing taxes on all properties at their mark, at their sale price, and that obviously is not the case, but it's not the case by very much.
Right, so every two years we do our, like this year, we're going to be sending out assessments in March, so every odd numbered year, we do revaluations and we, we adjust our values to the market. If we don't, our whole class of property has to get us, the Department of Revenue is kind of our, our boss. If, if, if our sales ratio, if our median sales ratio for a class of property is outside of the range of ninety five percent and a hundred and five percent, they're going to require us to adjust our whole class of property, so all residential properties, because we're at ninety one percent, we need to increase all of our residential value to get into that ninety five to a hundred and five percent range. Now, if, I'm trying to keep my train of thought here.
Well, just to add there, to me, that would be a good thing as a school board member, because the school district is looking for increased revenue. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, and that's not my goal. I'm not concerned with taxes. I'm concerned with assessed value and equity and, but yeah, saying that values are going up doesn't necessarily mean, I think if you look in our annual report, there's a certain page in there that shows we increased our overall value of the, in the city, the assessment went up maybe nineteen percent almost, but the taxable value after rollbacks only went up less than two percent. So it really depends on kind of how you compare with the rest of the state for residential property. If, if we go up nineteen percent and the rest of the state goes up twenty one percent, they're, we're not going to have as much taxable value as them. They do limit the growth. The state has a resident, a rollback factor that limits the statewide residential growth to three percent. So, I mean, it's, it's hard to probably explain in this setting, but, but yeah, there's limits to that, but you certainly want your, your property values to be growing if you're looking at the tax part of it, but it's not a guarantee.
So I'm trying to not pay attention to the state's regulation of property tax amounts, which is what rollbacks and the other things that the state does actually accomplish. My interest really is, my question is, if we decided to put more resources into your office so that you could, your office could have a coefficient, coefficient of dispersion of zero or one, I guess, would that increase our tax revenue, because more properties would be assessed at their actual sales, sale price?
I don't know that I can answer that question. I'm not sure that we, I mean, we, currently our C O D, our residential C O D is the best in the state at this point, and I don't, I don't know that you can, I'm not sure what the lowest number you can reasonably expect to get, Rod?
Will you grab the mic, please?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
I mean, I think one thing that we should be proud of is that Brad's office, there are lots of commercial and industrial appeals that happen, mostly commercial appeals. And they fight them pretty hard and they win more often than they lose. So although we always lose some in those settlements, some places don't contest those much at all, and thereby lose a fair amount of potential revenue for school districts, whereas Brad and his office fight those pretty hard, do quite well, and preserve more of the revenue for your district.
If, if we think there's a case to be made. If, sometimes we agree, and I mean, yeah, but yeah.
I think maybe more also to your point, Charlie, like you're looking for a direct correlation, and I think that the rollbacks you can't ignore when you're thinking about that, unfortunately, because it is, it is state mandated, so I'm not necessarily sure if a change in a coefficient is really going to get to what you're asking for, it sounds like. And I don't think anybody's ever used the, I'm going to sound dumb and then use standard deviation. So thank you, Brad. I, I, I see where you're going with it, but I don't think there's a direct correlation from what it sounds like, because the, your assessed value.
And I'm not sure how much better they could do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, you can't just change everybody's value to, to the sale price. That's not really, I mean, we're mass appraisal, so there's, you can have, you can have condos in, in an ident, in a building that are all identical and they're not going to sell for the same price, so we do, we, we find the most likely price, so it's not, it's not always going to be, you can't just change property assessments to the sale price. But, yeah, so I, I, I don't know that there's a clear answer to your question, but I don't think that it would, I don't think that that would be a way to raise more value.
Okay, well, again, I'm, I'm, I'm not intending to be critical of you or your office at all. I'm, I'm the opposite, actually, okay? I'm trying to figure out if, if, I have some responsibility for, on this board, to look at if we are receiving the revenue that we could be receiving in terms of taxes, okay, property taxes. So I appreciate everyone's comments, and I think I'll just take it all into advisement, okay?
Yeah, and if you have questions at any time, please call me and we can discuss. I'm happy to talk about it.
Thanks very much.
Any other board comments? Hearing none. We're going to move on to item number I, which is adjournment. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
All right, and I heard it from over here. All right, so moved by the city, seconded by the county, and roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Green Douglas?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Fix Marores?
Aye.
Remington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abraham?
Yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned. All right. Good afternoon. All right. Moved by the city, seconded by the county. Any comment? Oh, it was county and school?
Yes.
Okay, great. You got one in there. All right. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Green Douglas?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Fix Marores?
Aye.
Remington?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abraham?
Yes.
Easton?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, now we're on to the second G, which should be H, all right, and then board comments.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to ask Brad a couple of questions about the coefficient of dispersion measure, which is in your report, and thank you very much for a report that's well put together and of course, responds to, I think, to some of the suggestions about the way it's presented. I found it very easy to read and to understand, so thank you for your work there. The coefficient of dispersion, as I understand it, is a measure of how close assessed valuations are to sale prices for individual properties. Is that about correct?
About. It's, it's how, how, it's the, so one calculation we do is our median sales ratio, so we'll figure out how our assessments compare to sales. Like if a property sells for a one hundred thousand and we're at ninety thousand, that's a ninety percent ratio. We look at all of our sales, like this year we had around eight hundred sales. You line all those ratios up and find the middle ratio. That's your median ratio, so I think for this year, we're at ninety point seven two, if I recall correctly. The C O D is the measure, how, how, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to, it sounds very smart right now probably, but it's, it's, it's kind of like a standard deviation from that, the median, so it's, the lower the number is, the closer you are typically to that median ratio, which means you're assessing equitably. And that's our, probably the most important goal for us, so when a market's hot, our median might be dropping, but that doesn't mean we're doing a bad job if our C O D is still consistent with, with how our assessments compare to that median.
Well, my, my interest is not in figuring out if, I think the assessor's office is doing a bad job. My interest really is in trying to, to determine if we, if we are assessing taxes on all properties at their mark, at their sale price, and that obviously is not the case, but it's not the case by very much.
Right, so every two years we do our, like this year, we're going to be sending out assessments in March, so every odd numbered year, we do revaluations and we, we adjust our values to the market. If we don't, our whole class of property has to get us, the Department of Revenue is kind of our, our boss. If, if, if our sales ratio, if our median sales ratio for a class of property is outside of the range of ninety five percent and a hundred and five percent, they're going to require us to adjust our whole class of property, so all residential properties, because we're at ninety one percent, we need to increase all of our residential value to get into that ninety five to a hundred and five percent range. Now, if, I'm trying to keep my train of thought here.
Well, just to add there, to me, that would be a good thing as a school board member, because the school district is looking for increased revenue. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, that, and that's not my goal. I'm not concerned with taxes. I'm concerned with assessed value and equity and, but yeah, saying that values are going up doesn't necessarily mean, I think if you look in our annual report, there's a certain page in there that shows we increased our overall value of the, in the city, the assessment went up maybe nineteen percent almost, but the taxable value after rollbacks only went up less than two percent. So it really depends on kind of how you compare with the rest of the state for residential property. If, if we go up nineteen percent and the rest of the state goes up twenty one percent, they're, we're not going to have as much taxable value as them. They do limit the growth. The state has a resident, a rollback factor that limits the statewide residential growth to three percent. So, I mean, it's, it's hard to probably explain in this setting, but, but yeah, there's limits to that, but you, you certainly want your, your property values to be growing if you're looking at the tax part of it, but it's not a guarantee.
So I'm trying to not pay attention to the state's regulation of property tax amounts, which is what rollbacks and the other things that the state does actually accomplish. My interest really is, my question is, if we decided to put more resources into your office so that you could, your office could have a coefficient, coefficient of dispersion of zero or one, I guess, would that increase our tax revenue, because more properties would be assessed at their actual sales, sale price?
I don't know that I can answer that question. I'm not sure that we, I mean, we, currently our C O D, our residential C O D is the best in the state at this point, and I don't, I don't know that you can, I'm not sure what the lowest number you can reasonably expect to get, Rod?
Will you grab the mic, please?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
I mean, I think one thing that we should be proud of is that Brad's office, there are lots of commercial and industrial appeals that happen, mostly commercial appeals. And they fight them pretty hard and they win more often than they lose. So although we always lose some in those settlements, some places don't contest those much at all, and thereby lose a fair amount of potential revenue for school districts, whereas Brad and his office fight those pretty hard, do quite well, and preserve more of the revenue for your district.
If, if we think there's a case to be made. If, sometimes we agree, and I mean, yeah, but yeah.
I think maybe more also to your point, Charlie, like you're looking for a direct correlation, and I think that the rollbacks you can't ignore when you're thinking about that, unfortunately, because it is, it is state mandated, so I'm not necessarily sure if a change in a coefficient is really going to get to what you're asking for, it sounds like. And I don't think anybody's ever used the, I'm going to sound dumb and then use standard deviation. So thank you, Brad. I, I, I see where you're going with it, but I don't think there's a direct correlation from what it sounds like, because the, your assessed value.
And I'm not sure how much better they could do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, you can't just change everybody's value to, to the sale price. That's not really, I mean, we're mass appraisal, so there's, you can have, you can have condos in, in an ident, in a building that are all identical and they're not going to sell for the same price, so we do, we, we find the most likely price, so it's not, it's not always going to be, you can't just change property assessments to the sale price. But, yeah, so I, I, I don't know that there's a clear answer to your question, but I don't think that it would, I don't think that that would be a way to raise more value.
Okay, well, again, I'm, I'm, I'm not intending to be critical of you or your office at all. I'm, I'm the opposite, actually, okay? I'm trying to figure out if, if, I have some responsibility for, on this board, to look at if we are receiving the revenue that we could be receiving in terms of taxes, okay, property taxes. So I appreciate everyone's comments, and I think I'll just take it all into advisement, okay?
Yeah, and if you have questions at any time, please call me and we can discuss. I'm happy to talk about it.
Thanks very much.
Any other board comments? Hearing none. We're going to move on to January thirtieth, and we're going to discuss all of the information packets except hold comments on I P seven.
And also I P four.
And also I P four.
One second.
I'm sorry, why are?
I have to recuse myself for, for I P four, which is a later discussion item, so.
Oh, it is a.
Yes, it's, it's on the, it's on the work session agenda.
Gotcha, gotcha, sorry about that. There's too many tabs open on my computer.
No, there's a lot of inner working pieces here, so.
I just want to talk also about like I B, I think it is I B seven, I B six, I B six.
On the thirtieth?
On the thirtieth.
Housing information?
Scroll down, yeah, housing information. Yeah. I just want to bring it up. Yes. Yeah, I, I just would like to know, when, when we say like the housing choice voucher waiting list have ten thousand ninety one, is that like the Washington and, you know, Johnson County? Or this is just like Johnson County? And how much is Iowa City resident out of that?
Tracy, hi, she with the Neighborhood Development Services. When we report the waiting list numbers, it's for our whole jurisdiction, so Johnson County, Washington County, and Iowa County. Now the majority are Johnson County. I can't tell you that split. We can run those numbers, but the far majority would be Johnson County.
And we don't know how many people live in Iowa City on that waiting list.
We would. I don't have that with me right now, but we can find that information.
Okay, I really appreciate this information, but you know, it would be great if we can have next time Iowa City, because you know, we are focusing on I S U T here, like on this meeting. If you can just have like Iowa City numbers be added, would be amazing.
Actually, as long as you're there. A question that I have is, and again, I don't expect you to have it at hand, but has the number of voucher recipients who are still waiting for housing, has that grown? Is there a comparison that can be made with, before the state lifted that language that said that landlords had to accept?
We've had a hold or we've had a freeze.
Okay, okay, so the freeze, so that's actually trumping the other, okay?
There is, because after the freeze, nobody's applying, so to, and this is a waiting list, but, but I think what you mean that we're still seeing a number of people are not finding housing easy.
Right, because landlords are not accepting the vouchers. That's what I was, that's what I was trying to get at, but.
In your budget book, we, we changed some of our N D S G O Ms, whatever you want to call them, and one of those is how many landlords are participating in our program, so we'll be able to track that every year.
Awesome. That's awesome. Thank you.
Exactly.
One additional question. Do we know, when does the HUD point in time count for homeless people experiencing, who are unsheltered, get reported, because that happens in January? I didn't know how long the report takes to get to us.
To cycle through the entire HUD reporting system takes several months before it's available. I think the last year's count was just made available a few months ago, but I'm sure we can get the local count that was just completed a week or so ago to you.
For the, for our public housing, even though we, I know that we, we are kind of changing it, but do we still have people, the people on the waiting list for public housing? They still can receive public housing?
Tracy's coming back up.
Our public housing waiting list is closed as well.
Yeah, I know it's closed, but.
We're cycling through.
The waiting list.
Yeah, as people move, yes, we are, we're taking people off the waiting list. So the program's there, and we're still having a waiting list. We're just not accepting new applicants, because the wait depending on what size of bedroom goes up down, back down to twenty twenty.
Yeah, but do you know that, do you remember we now, kind of like our public housing will be, the program that we receive from, we're going to turn them to.
Voucher conversion.
Exactly, the vows conversion. That's what I'm looking for, thank you. If that's going to affect like the people who are in the waiting list for public housing? A number of the housing.
We don't know which conversion method we're going to use yet. Our goal is to do, transfer those to a section eight platform, and those tenants, I think, have to live in that unit, depending on which conversion method we, but for most of them, the tenants would have to live there for additional year before they could take a voucher and live somewhere else. So we're going to continue operating those as affordable housing, so if they want to stay in that unit with a voucher, they can. If they want to move and port their voucher, we're still going to provide affordable housing in our public housing units, so hopefully we, we increase the supply of affordable housing.
Yes, I understand that, but that, I mean, that. Yes, I understand that, but that, I mean, that's will make, if the people choose to stay, like, after we give them the voucher, if they choose to stay in the same public housing, is that means we lost one of the public housing that the people are waiting on the waiting list for it?
Well, I guess it wouldn't change since that person's staying, whether they're staying as a public housing tenant or now with a Section 8 voucher. Because we get, we get additional Section 8 vouchers. It's not like we're, we're taking from our.
When we take that, we get.
Yeah, when you get a conversion, you get, so if we have 86 public housing units, we get 86 additional vouchers.
That means the same number.
Yes, yeah, so we're not losing anything.
Yeah, we are not losing anything. Okay, that's what my question was. Thank you.
All right.
And now, I can excuse myself.
Okay, so I guess we'll start with, we will continue our discussion on IP 30, January 30th. And this is gonna be IP number seven, if there is any comments there.
I would, having been on HCDC, this is in the weeds and difficult, but since this is the forum that we have to talk about staff recommendations for awards, I would look, like to put forward that 4Cs receive the amount that they were funded at last year. They are one of the agencies whose recommended amount went down to 15,000. I recognize fully that every agency has merit and should be funded. We just don't have enough funding. That said, I do notice that there are some agencies that, through staff recommendation, are receiving above the amount that they were asking for. And so I think that there are ways that we can find $10,000 without harming other agencies and to help 4Cs. My reasoning for helping 4Cs out is that it is providing much-needed childcare to very specific and targeted groups. Several of them are immigrant communities, where the students who become caregivers are accredited, given the training to be skilled, and yet are also able to care for children in their communities in a culturally appropriate way. That is not duplicative effort. NCJC does amazing work and has a larger reach perhaps, but I think that 4Cs has some unique offerings that, that the community would suffer if they were not there. Additionally, I know that Executive Director Forbes has provided commentary to council, and that she has owned it, but in the way that she has applied for the grant, doesn't tell the whole story. This is a situation where the agency itself has done nothing wrong, has been doing good work. There's, and, and in fact, I know had met with United Way to talk about why their, their application might not look so hot on paper. And United Way was able to give them some guidance about the ways in which their data actually also tells a story that, in fact, the application wasn't reflecting. So I just put that forward as something for consideration. And I fully recognize that taking one, taking money from an agency is very difficult. At the same time, we want to increase our impact and allow these agencies to do more. It takes more money, but in this instance, I really feel that 4Cs would, and the community, would suffer because of the unique offerings that they pose.
I would like to hear from the city manager a little bit about the letter we received from DVIP regarding RVAP. I think that's another one that's, RVAP is now part of DVIP, or in other, or that's right, terms. Can, can we walk through, there's just so many of these organizations that we are unable to fund, and that's one that I know we got thoughtful communication about, sort of, complications that happened with joining two groups.
Sure, let me, let me just take one step back before I go there and just clarify what's in front of you today, or what staff direction we're requesting at this time. The, the budget allocations, the, the dollars for individual agencies will come back to you for a formal vote, probably around May. We wait until we have the allocations from Congress that, that flow through CDBG into this program before we lock down the specific dollar amounts, and particularly in this, this year. Your guess is as good as ours on where those CDBG allocations will come this year. We put the scoring recommendations, so this is a, a in-process type of situation here. We put them in here to help illustrate what we were really trying to get at, which is what you talked about your last meeting, which is the 50-50, approximate 50-50 funding split for the six direct agencies, and then the rest of the competitive pool. So the, the allocations are fair game, and we can talk about those today because they're, they're in here. But it's really the last paragraph of the memo itself that we're trying to get concurrence on. And that's the approximate 50-50 percentage split language, with neither group, that is, the six direct agencies or the rest of the competitive field, getting more than 60% in any given, any given funded year. And that's what we really wanna make sure that you're comfortable with. Now, with respect to the, the individual recommendations, so it's been, it's been a bit of a scramble since your last meeting. So when you were talking about that consolidated plan and the 50-50 split, staff had already put out their recommendations for funding to aid to agencies. And at that time, it, we weren't at that approximate 50-50 number. So we felt like we had to go back and revise those recommendations downward to get, to, for those six agencies to get closer to that 50-50 split, because HCDC was scheduled to meet before you could vote on this policy language or direct us on this policy language, if that makes sense. So we quickly kind of did that to try to get more in line with, we thought, where your direction was. And turns out that HCDC couldn't muster the quorum to have that meeting. So there's still kind of, these recommendations are kind of in a hold right now, and we'll come back to you once we get those congressional allocations. Speaking to the DVIP, RVAP, so the initial staff recommendations that were posted in December had the combined amount in there. You can see that it's, that would be page 372 of your packet. And you can see where that staff recommendation line was 95,000. So then we were faced with the task of, okay, we gotta get down to that 50-50 split, or, or closer to. And we put out some revised recommendations on 129, that's page 373. And you can see the staff recommendation dropped from that 95 to 62,693. I don't believe it was our intention to fully remove the RVAP portion. So we know that we, we probably need to revisit this and, and issue another round of staff recommendations that will come to you in that, in that May timeframe, because I don't think that was our intention, our intention to have that big of a shift. But we're talking about a fixed pot of money. We're talking about a pot of money that I think there's a good chance we're gonna lose some federal funding support for over time in the next few years. So there's no doubt that there's some tough decisions ahead, because each and one, each one of these agencies can demonstrate the need. That, that's, that is very clear, and they, and, and just as you described, Councilor Alter, when you increase one, you're, you're kind of, you know, pushing that loss somewhere else. So it's a very difficult decision. We tried to be transparent with how we've scored. Staff included some of the metrics that we look at in the packet as well, so you can see that. Of course, we welcome your guidance, but at the end of the day, we're gonna have to present you with the final set of recommendations, and you have the full leeway to, to shift those around. So what I would say, if you know that there's a particular number you wanna hit for any particular agency, let us know now. That's gonna make the recommendations just that much easier. If not, we will do our best to present to you sound recommendations, and fully expect that you're gonna bring a different lens to that, and may alter those come final vote time.
Quick question. HCDC will be able to look at their staff recommendations and also collaborate and make some adjustments, should they choose?
You wanna comment on that, Tracy? I don't think our intention was to return to HCDC on the scoring, but I don't know why we couldn't, if we have to wait.
Okay, I just wanted to, yes, please let us.
Yes, we can bring it back to HCDC. The question is if we can get a quorum again. We've not gotten a quorum for the last two meetings, but yes, we can bring it back. The big question was, for us, when we, both DVIP and RVAP were legacy agencies, when they merged, does that, does your 50-50 split cover that? Because they, they wouldn't be a direct-funded agency. RAP wouldn't have been a direct-funded agency, but now, with their allocation, it really hard to get that 50-50 split, when you talk about what funding RAP had, and now that gets into, that merges with the DVIP. So that was a struggle.
Can I hop in real fast? Or, actually, I have a couple of things, so you go ahead.
No, no, I was, I, I think that to the question of the 50-50 split not to exceed 60, that makes sense. But then when we get into the nitty-gritty of what do we do when, when in the future, we would have future nonprofits that might merge or take on responsibilities, that one was a direct agency and one was not, do we penalize them for collaborating? Or in this situation, they were sort of forced into the relationship, it's, they're doing a great job, but it wasn't exactly the planned join. And I, I feel like, I don't know, maybe we should just pause that, that the 50-50 not to exceed 60, to me, makes sense. And then do we, how do we address the collaboration or joining of non-direct into a direct agency? It's my feeling that we, we want to not discourage people to join one another. We don't think we wanna have this hard cap that says, if you take on a responsibility of another valued nonprofit, you cut off your opportunity to earn city funding. That doesn't make sense to me. It's working in the wrong direction.
I would, I would say, for every good argument, there's a, there's another side to it, which is that I completely agree. We, I don't think that we want to penalize or ward off collaboration, because it's so difficult to do this work. But by the same token, that also has the potential of essentially creating these much larger agencies. And then there is less and less for these smaller agencies. And, you know, I'm looking at the list, and it's, you know, I think any one and all of one of us would agree that they're all doing incredibly important work for different parts of the community, right? So it's a balancing act. I completely agree with you, though, as far as the 50-50 with sort of a 60% kinda guardrail. And actually, I wanna say thank you to staff for that really quick action. I know it was this moment of, here's what we think, and then it had to be done immediately. So thank you for that, as well as also kind of pointing us to the language in there for us to, to look at. By my calling out in, in advocating for 4Cs, I just am putting it on the table for us to consider for future. I know that this does have to go to vote, but it is something that I'm advocating for, that we go at least to the, you know, if staff needs to know, I guess council would wanna know where I'm thinking too, and it is to, to get it back to its previous year's funding. And then finally, just because I'm gonna stick my oar in, and I have the, the microphone here, I recognize that HCDC does important work, and that this normally, the, the process is that it goes through HCDC to look at awards. However, they haven't made quorum in two sessions. This has been a, a problem. And I, I'm a little reluctant to then have a commission that hasn't been able to make quorum twice, that that doesn't show a huge amount of engagement for something as important as this. It is in front of us now, and I would feel comfortable with us, for better for worse, walking through this together. I don't mean disrespect to HCDC, but I do think that this is probably their primary role, and they haven't been able to make quorum. So the continued efforts, I'm wondering how much they would actually look through and, and have these hard discussions. My two cents.
Just on that last point, I think commissioners were, were they asked to provide their scores, and only a couple of them did? So it wasn't just the lack of being at the meeting?
So we've switched the policy for next year, that staff will just be scoring. But for this year, yes, they were asked to score, and we got two, do we get three? So just two?
Okay. Out of nine?
Mm-hmm. Well, we only had eight, I think, but yes, two out of eight.
Thank you. So I tend to agree with me in that, maybe for that part, I think just we could continue to move forward, given the commission's lack of engagement on this this year.
So I guess one of the things that I heard our city manager say, if there is something that you feel strongly about in this moment, then that should be shared. Otherwise, we will have other opportunities to come and address this. We'll be voting on this in May, and staff will be revising this. And if there is a way for you all to get it to us before May, that'd be great, so that we can have more discussion on this.
Councilor Alter, are you talking about coming back and doing more of a comprehensive work session, where we go through and do some of the work that hasn't been done by HCDC between now and May? I just wanna make sure I understand what, what you're thinking, and if we, we need to move forward on that.
I mean, I don't think that this is having to create a wheel. We've got this here, but I think that we can take the time to react to it and to think through how, especially if we know, as we know more about what kind of funding we're actually looking at, to see what makes the sense. Working within the guidelines that we just all said, that, well, most of us have, have weighed in to say that 50-50 with a guardrail of 60%, 60-40 makes sense. That is, that historically has been what HCDC does, but I don't think that we need to go through and score everything and, you know, do that kind of work. But I think using this as a guideline to say what the revised staff recommendations are, to say, how are we feeling about this?
And then just deal with that in May, or were you thinking of something prior to May? Or not sure?
I'm not sure.
I think that poses on when we'll get the next round of recommendations.
That's what I was gonna say, is, or intuiting that it's, once we know better, what kind of money we're actually working with.
I, I'm asking only because I agree with you about the importance of this, and I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm understanding what.
How about this, we'll, we'll revise our staff scoring one last time, put that in an IP with just a memo explaining for the, for the public's information that the actual vote will come later in May. And then you'll have plenty of time to sit and reflect on that, ask us questions. And then, again, once we get the final numbers, we'll come back to you, and you can take the final vote. Does that sound okay? We'll, we'll aim to get you something in February. It may not be the next week or two, but sometime mid to late February.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items on IP 7? Here and none. We're gonna move on to IP 4. And Councilor Mo is gonna recuse himself?
4 is preservation. 5 is 21, right?
Oh, all right.
That's correct.
No, your, your, IP 4 is the memo.
Annual Historic Preservation Report Presentation?
One of you's talking about IP, one of you's talking about the agenda. You're both, you're both right.
Okay.
Two Gs.
All right, so we're on, yeah, we're still in the work session on information, on, on January 30th, IP?
Yeah, okay. It shows up as item 5.
It's a listed agenda item, Mayor. It's item 5 on the agenda.
Item 5, not like IB.
Correct.
So we're carving out IP 4, so that we, or 5, and holding it off, as we were for Mayor Protem with aid to agencies.
On the work session agenda, it's later.
And for the aid to agency, I really, I think you guys did not understand me very good. Because I was saying, only to the 2030, I cannot discuss that 2030 recommendation for the, but why not, I cannot discuss, like, aid to agency grant? I can, because I'm not applying for that, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I may, I may have misunderstood what you're raising. I'm, I'm happy to talk with you about the conflict issues, probably at another time.
No, no, right now, I, I said, like, I should also be involved in discussing the recommendations. the recommendations grant because I don't have any conflict.
Okay, you're right, I may have misunderstood. I thought that your nonprofit might have been applying for. If not, then, then I agree.
But you know, just for the recommendation for 2030, because you guys are mixing the questions, you're talking about 50-50. I don't have to talk about that 50-50, and you know, for the 2020 recommendations. I don't have to talk about that because I'm recusing myself.
Okay.
But for, for this recommendation by the staff for aid to agency, I should be involved in that.
If your agency will not be applying for any of those funds, then I agree with you. I don't, nothing springs to mind.
This year recommendation, I'm talking about this year recommendations.
Yeah.
We are not.
If you're not applying, then I agree with you.
Yeah, I should discuss that.
All right, so we'll go back to our IP seven, and we'll just return to just that part of the, part of it, or anything else that you identify that you wanted to discuss where you don't have to recuse yourself.
Yes, I, I'm not going to talk about 20, 2030 recommendation. I'm recusing myself from that. But I, I would like also to talk about this recommendation the same way I was listening. The same way that, you know, we talk about 4Cs. And as organization, I was just trying to see why we, like, one, two organizations, Dream City and Center for Work, I guess, are getting zero even though they are, you know, legacy organization until that time. Especially there are three of them are new. And I see like one of them get, and the others two did not get anything. And what the philosophy have behind that?
Yeah, I can, I can comment on that. One, I, I just reiterate the point. We don't have enough funding to meet all the needs. There's going to be hard decisions for both Dream City and Center for Worker Justice. You can see the, the scoring numbers on those applications are quite lower than other applications that were submitted. And we are trying to base our scoring on, or base our funding decisions on scoring that can be reviewed. So those are lower scoring applications. And secondly, both of those agencies received significant ARPA dollars that have not been spent down, and a lot of the reasons for the requests overlap. So for example, wage theft, or for some of Dream City's work, it's the same reasons that we awarded ARPA funds for. And we project that those ARPA funds will still be with those agencies for the coming year. So when you're applying for the same thing, we've already been awarded. There's a duplication of benefits concern that staff also noted.
What you mean, the request is the same request that is already being funded?
It's overlapping requests, yes.
But is this, I think my understanding, this is for fiscal year 20, yeah, 26. 26, 27, right? Which is ARPA ended on the 26.
On, yes, so half of the year. Fiscal year 26 starts in July of '25.
Yeah. Which is going to be like half of the year. What about the other half? We just, I just feel like, you know, only two organizations that run by people of color and serve people of color add the organization that been eliminated is just like, you know, doesn't look right. And whether the council changing their mind or not, but I think this is not right. And I think also like when it come to, I read like some of the criteria that the staff used, it is really, we need to make it easy for the people, not like make it harder. Like if the people, if like the organizations doesn't have certain mechanism that they supposed to have in place, we supposed to give them the supporting tool to succeed. Not like go after them to find out a mistake so we can get them out of the, this. I, I think the way that this being done is, I, I really just don't like it.
Yeah, we've given technical assistance to both of those organizations. We've provided technical assistance to a lot of the organizations on this list to help make them successful.
Yes, now, yeah. But we eliminate the fund and we give them technical assistance.
Oh, I think the technical assistance has been provided for quite some time. And, you know, the only thing I can encourage council to do is, if you want to dig deeper into this, look at the applications. Go through the applications yourself. Staff is doing the best we can to score those. We're trying to be objective in scoring those. And we're trying to maximize all of the dollars that we have. Are we perfect? No. Can you see things differently than we do? 100%. That's why you're the ultimate decision maker in these cases. But what we've pledged to you as staff is to review these from a professional, objective way and give you the best recommendations we can, knowing that there's scarce resources and not enough to meet all the demands in the community. That's the best we can do. That's what we put forward. And ultimately, you can, you all can change those with no heartburn on, on our end.
Sure, and I will talk to the council. Because I'm going to give you my bit here. You know, this is, this is tough time for organization who like serve immigrants. And cutting fund right now is really not okay. And I think everybody depending on the local level right now. And those organization are doing great job. Maybe, yes, Dream City got a lot money. And I, but also sometimes I think like a lot money, but a lot money to, to do certain projects, not like general operation fund. Maybe, I really don't know. But I'm going to speak about Center for Worker Justice because this general operation fund for them is really huge to continue the work that they do, especially during this tough time with immigration and everything. So I, I just believe that, and also think about it, those organization, they become only one year in a legacy to become a legacy. And they got funded even last time without receiving an ARPA or anything. They also get scored by, unrecommended by the staff, zero. This is historic. This is not something like new. But let us not even go there. I just think that this organization, last time they got zero. But after that, the council decided to give them 15. They get 15 for two years. And now back to zero during the, the next four years is really going to be difficult. And we need to look to those organization. We are changing the whole thing right now. And starting next year, most of like the six organizations, they going to get their funding. Those people, they are not going to get funding. They will be competitive. They come and apply. Maybe they get, maybe they don't get. But at least this year is kind of guaranteed for all of them, only for this year. Everybody got this year except those two organization, which is zero, zero. I can see here, Megan, I don't know you looking at it. Yes, that's why I want at least, since this is the last thing we're going to be doing. And after that, we're going to have the 50-50, whatever you guys decide. Then I recommend those two organization also get the minimum amount that they receive by, you know, legacy organization. They work hard. I remember when they put the application to become a legacy agency, they have to go through HCDC and after that become legacy. Because it's at that time, it's say minimum you get is $15,000. That's why I thinks we have to figure it out and give this year like, this is the last one and only one year. It's not like every, like, time was have 15 this year and 15 next year. This is the last time they will get funds through this. So we should give them $15,000 minimum. I guess the same minimum amount everybody got. And even if we have to add some money, I'm not recommending taking from organizations. You know, I, the last thing I want to see after we allocate something from organization who are happy to see that, taking something from them. But we need to figure it out and just fund this year. Because those people, they, they been depending on this for general relation. It is in there, but yet for this year and next year. And sudden like killing like this, I don't think it's okay. But now, at least you have it for one year and we are not going to give you again. You're going to be go and do that. That's what I recommend.
Thanks for making your comments. And I guess I was not prepared to, even when Councilor Alter went into what she talked about with her thoughts on 4Cs. I, I guess where I ended with that conversation was, you know, staff is going to come back with a recommendation. I think, you know, any individual counselor can make comments now. If, if, if a counselor is asking me, do I support, you know, increasing any funds for any one agency, I would tell you that I'm not prepared to make that decision right now. Because I have not gone through all of the applications to that great detail to make a recommendation. Many of us have been on, on boards or committees that review applications for funding, and it is quite involved. And so personally, I just don't feel like in this moment, I can, you know, make recommendations. But I think, you know, the, the purpose was for individuals to state any of their thoughts. And certainly, our colleagues hear them. Pleas can be made to the colleagues as well, but also staff hears it also. So that's just me. I'm not in a position to make a recommendation at this time.
You mean, we're going to talk about it later?
Yes.
They're going to come out with more recommendations, and we'll be able to, as a council, talk about them, about these numbers.
But what I, what I hear that is for maybe the recommendation you set for 4Cs. But I'm saying also a recommendation right now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm saying this is what I'm advocating for, and you're advocating for that. Right, yeah. But nobody's saying yes or no. It's just so that people know that this is what you want, what I want, so that then staff can come out with numbers that are, when they have a better sense of the money. And then we all get to talk about it and actually do some of that.
Making the decisions.
Advocacy, that, make decisions.
Yeah, that, that could be fine.
I have a question about just the reporting. So in the, in our packet, we have the 20, fiscal year 24 performance and metrics. I understand we're still in '25 right now. Are there any like midway reports or any way we can get metrics? I mean, my primary concern, just to speak to your request, Mayor Protem is in the FY '24. CWJ really, really fell short of what they anticipated they would be able to do with those dollars, like by a lot and much more than any of the other organizations in here. And I don't know what that mismatch is about. But that's something where if they're, if that's improving, I'd be interested in, you know, having this conversation deeper, entertaining what you're saying. But I don't know if we have any way to, to know that partway through.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. Sam Turnbull, the Grant Specialist. We're currently receiving the second quarter reports from the agencies in the EC Impact Portal. And I'm compiling that data. They're not all turned in yet. I think they're due like mid-February, end of February. But once I get those in, I can put together a similar table and provide that.
So if that could be.
And what data are we looking for?
So I'm just looking at what's in the packet as far as the, what organizations have identified. And I'm sorry, I don't have a page number in this app for what this PDF is. It's the orange, it's the orange one, thank you. So I, as I understand it, agencies identified goals for themselves of, for fiscal year '24. And then we have sort of the, the column for goals and the column for accomplishments. And so CWJ said they hope to serve 730 Iowa City individuals, but only served 134. They said that they wanted to serve 80 individuals to receive stable housing, but only served 30. They wanted to have 160 volunteer hours invested in programming, but only had 13 hours. And wanted to serve 75 individuals in the Financial Literacy Education Program, but only served 13. And I think part of what we're talking about with the, you know, all these conversations is impact. And I just would have a, I just want to know what's happening there.
Yeah, I don't know, something happened, but that's not right. I don't know. So they, they, yeah, they should have that report. But I agree, but still, you know, we should know. Like when somebody, something like this happen as a city, oh, you did not do what you do and now we cutting fund. No. We know that these, these people are providing essential service to a lot of people in the community. Okay, what, what happened? And how, can we help you? You know, this is, this is really big change from the, from the first one and the second one. You said this go on, you have this go, I think that comparison should have, that be happen. And, and so the people can figure it out. But no, we, you failed, you have this and zero fund. That's what I'm talking about.
I hear that. Thank you.
Any more conversation on this item? Hearing none? Okay. So are you recusing yourself?
I'm recusing myself from work session item number five, which is inclusive of IP, January 30, item number 10B. Yeah, so.
Yes.
So I understood that we'd probably not talk about this during IP time and talk about it on Agenda IP.
Got it.
So.
Okay, that works.
Well, not there yet, right?
We're not there yet. We still got to hear from the.
So we're going to hold off on IP four for anyone that is paying attention with our January 30th date. And we're going to move on to item number three, which is the University of Iowa Government USG Updates. Welcome.
Hello. So happy primary day. I know we have special elections going on right now. The student body is really getting involved in it. We've had a couple of student orgs try to set up meetings with the candidates. And our civic engagement organization, Hawk the Vote, is also making a post, or has already made a post, the candidate, candidate guide. And also just a little announcement, I am now the Operations Director of Hawk the Vote. So you might be getting some emails from me in a different capacity now. Speaking of elections, Senate is back in full swing, and it is almost election season with USG. So that's going to be a really busy time for us. I luckily do not have to rerun my position. I'm pretty sure you guys all know that. And our Governmental Relations Committee is about to go and present a lot of resolutions that we have based on all the research they've been doing on our advocacy points. So they're going to pass those resolutions soon. And then we'll do our caucus day where all the senators can go and present our stuff to, you know, in Des Moines. The graduate student government is holding a coat drive right now in conjunction with basic needs at Iowa since it's so cold. So USG has recently purchased a bunch of coats to donate to that. It's not our initiative, but we are very excited about it. And after work session tonight, I will be going down to our usual Senate session to do an open access for our senators to prep them for town hall next week. So I'm just going to be going over kind of things that city council has done that has been exciting recently. Definitely going to be a lot of talk about housing as always, about transit. And then this year, I'm going to be giving them kind of briefs on all of you guys. So I know that you guys all do a lot of really good advocacy within the community. So I'd really like our students to engage with you about that, so be prepared.
Awesome, and I have a bit of a different announcement tonight. I want to read something I wrote. Hello, councilors. It is with deep regret that I inform you I'm no longer the city liaison for USG. My Nava will be stepping into my role. I was terminated from my position last week on Monday, and I come to you today to preserve these ties that I have maintained with every single one of my city councilors and notify everyone respectfully. I was terminated from USG from the following reasons. One, because I did not finish the renters guide on the timeline of the administration. And two, because I failed to indicate my absence from a cabinet meeting that took place over winter break while I was working at my other job. For these reasons, the Ucard administration has chosen to relieve me from my role. I personally disagree with all the reasons regarding my termination, and I am saddened that I must leave this job prematurely. USG leaders violated the terms of conduct meetings for executive members twice in order to expedite my removal from the organization. And I have served in this position for the last 18 months and cannot help but feel that this position was swept out from under me. I hope that this new chapter opens doors for me and helps me redirect my attention toward my long-term goals. You're not getting rid of me just yet. I'm still going to be involved in the Comp Plan Steering Committee and take my passions to that arena. This has been one of the most life-changing experiences I've ever been blessed with. Thank you, councilors, for the opportunity of a lifetime. It's been an honor to serve as USG City Liaison. Thank you.
And we want to say thanks to you and all that you've done, and I know we'll see you around.
For sure, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item number five. Item number four, which is the Annual Historic Preservation Annual Report Presentation. preservation annual report presentation. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you, council, for letting me speak to you. I'm Jessica Bristow. I'm the staff member for the Iowa City Historic Preservation Commission and I'm here today to present you with the Certified Local Government Annual Report, or at least its highlights. The report will be reviewed by the commission at their February 13th meeting. And then following the meeting, we will provide a copy of the report for you and then we will submit the report to the state at the end of the month with the mayor's signature. Just a little background, I think you've been through this before, but Iowa City is a certified local government. It is a program that was the result of the 1966 Historic Preservation Act and its amendments. The program began in 1980 and Iowa City joined it by 1983. The program encourages historic preservation at the local level, encourages the local government use of the Secretary of the Interior standards for historic preservation. And they provide technical assistance through the state historic preservation office and also provides funding opportunities for preservation activities. Part of our responsibility is to do the annual report. The National Register of Historic Places is the most well-known part of the federal branch of historic preservation. It is different from, but corresponds with our local landmark and district program. In Iowa City, we have eight historic districts. That's about 689 properties and all of those are also listed in the National Register of Historic Places. We also have five conservation districts. That's just a local program. There's no National Register component of that. We also have 89 properties that are some type of landmark. 68 of those are individual local landmarks and 65 are National Register landmarks. Some of them are both. The annual report will ask us questions about both the commission's work in the National Register component and the commission's work in the local component. Some of the questions are basic questions. The commission has 12 seats. 10 of them are currently occupied, two are, have been vacant for a long time because they are small districts. The commission had 12 meetings this year and the budget is part of the Neighborhood and Development Services budget, but we have a mailing that we send out and then there's also training and stuff. And then, of course, we have the Historic Preservation Fund. This current fiscal year, the budget for that is $42,000. And this slide is one of my favorites because it shows our historic districts, our conservation districts, and then the red dots are the local landmarks spread out amongst them. So one of the questions about the National Register is whether or not the commission undertook any registration or nomination projects. Now, the commission did not undertake any this year. However, as, as a CLG and our, our role in that, we did review the National Register nomination for the Iowa City Recreation Center. That was just undertaken by some members of the public instead of the commission. So for the local component, they have question six, which basically is where any property is locally designated. And of course, this year, we did locally designate the Slezak Skarta Hall of Building. The only other question they have about our local program then is who on staff or commission meets the Secretary of the Interior's qualifications and what's their expertise as staff. I am qualified in architectural history and historic architecture. We currently have one commissioner, Margaret Beck, who is also qualified in prehistoric archaeology. Question eight and its subparts are about community engagement mostly. The first one is about the commission's work plan and each year, the commission has a work plan. It's something that's required by the state as well. In this year and last year, the commission tried to break it down into something that is workable. And so they have three focus items. The first one is Oak Grove Park. This park is south of the railroad tracks and just west of Dodge Street. And it is a location where Mexican laborers between 1916 and 1936 lived in Abario in that location. When this park is overhauled eventually, the commission has voiced an opinion that they would like to be involved in making sure that the naming of that park reflects this Mexican heritage in Iowa City. And the Parks Director knows about that. So this is just a, something that is one of their main focuses, but it's something that is also kind of ongoing. They also have a priority of a landmark district subcommittee. They did form that last year and did work, but it was mostly on the local landmark designation. And so they will continue that subcommittee in the future, trying to be proactive about individual landmarks or any potential future districts. And finally, the last priority is engaging with local community groups and council, much as they did last year for the landmarking. They feel that's very important to get out and make sure that those connections are always renewed and know what the community is interested in. We do have ongoing work as part of the work plan. We always have our historic preservation awards. This year, it will be Thursday, February 27th at the Public Library at 5:30 PM. Everyone here is invited for sure. We also have our Historic Preservation Fund and we've been interested in the Summit Street Monument as well. Question 8.2 asks about our assistance that we've provided to the community on preservation projects. Staff can provide technical and design assistance. This year, we had the most inquiries we've ever had with 312. That was far above our highest year that we've had in the past. And those inquiries resulted in 119 applications. We work with property owners, designers and stuff for project approvals. The project that you see here is the second student build house for the lot that used to be 724 Ronalds, but is now split into 724 and 726 Ronalds. The Housing Fellowship is the owner of, of both houses on that property. We also provided assistance through our Historic Preservation Fund. This is a very popular program. The slides here just happen to show one property that received multiple grants. Basically, the fund provides a $5,000 matching grant or no interest loan to a property owner for a exterior rehab project. To date, we have funded 63 projects on 49 properties. That's $222,000 worth of grants and loans provided on about $560,000 worth of projects. We've had some issues and challenges. We are still navigating through rash of work without permits and, and how we go through that. We have the two long-term open commission seats and hearing about difficulties with commissions meeting quorums. We've had our time where we've had troubles meeting quorums as well. We've tried mailing to the residents in those districts and all sorts of things, but it's just hard when a district is small to get a rep from that area. The, another difficulty, we, so the Summit Street Monument, we had received a grant in the past to study the monument and it was determined by the expert that we need to relocate it indoors in order to preserve it. And then the best case would then to put a replica in its place. And we did have funding on the budget for this current fiscal year for that. However, it's a complicated project and there's not, it's not possible that we could finish it within this year. And funding's not continued into the next fiscal year. One really good thing is, I think we all remember when the House at 1011 Woodlawn caught fire a few years ago in the fall. It has been empty and we've had some complaints about different things and it was sold to a couple who is fully invested in rehabbing it and is very excited about that. So we should be seeing that property come back to life over the coming year. And then partnerships that are formed or continued. One of the things we did back in 2020, like right before the COVID shutdown, we did a presentation on the two properties that were involved in our civil rights grant that we had. And they were about black student housing here in town. This presentation was at the Public Library. We did not record it for some reason and we've had a lot of interest over time about that presentation. And so the beginning of last year, we did go back and record that so that Stephanie can use that and send it out and provide it to people who are interested in it. We've also been working regularly with the Parks and Rec Director. The commission had been interested in the city park pool stuff as well as the Oak Grove Park that I've mentioned. And they also, the commission provided some comments on the naming of West Side Park when she suggested that. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions from council?
Jessica, do you know why there was such a huge uptick in inquiries this year?
No, I, I don't really. I mean, there was during COVID because everybody was sitting around wondering what they could do with their house. And so they were all calling about that. And then there was still some interest, but kind of a lack of contractors. And so I'm kind of wondering if maybe there've been a few more contractors who've come in and so people are actually starting to act on that possibly. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. I was just curious if you see people using the Historic Preservation Fund and the Climate Action Fund together from the city? Is that something that, that has happened often or yet?
I don't know very often what the climate action is funding, but there have been a few times when their staff have reached out to me about some projects and I, we've offered to do some sharing. I, I'm not sure, because I don't know what they have ended up doing. You know, like we talked about something with Trinity Church and we, yeah, I think the Catholic Worker House on Johnson Street. I think both of, both of us have been involved in talking to those groups about things, but I don't know if anything has actually
Sure.
come to fruition.
Next question is with the historic preservation is a, a function of the National Park Service with that hiring freeze, are you anticipating any problems processing? Any applications or any processes? Is there any things that you guys have seen already happening?
No, I haven't. And I haven't heard anything from the state yet either.
Not yet. Okay. And then what is the most common request you get from people? Like what is it, when people reach out, what is the thing that they most often need or want?
It's such a wide range. I mean, I, I might hear from a realtor who has a new owner that has questions. You know, that's common. You know, can they do this or that or whatever? Or is a property in a district? Or do I need review for offense? You know, things that we don't need. But regularly, it's, it's just people reaching out about the work that they want to do or whether or not we have information about the history of a property. You know, it's, it's wide ranging. I just tend to keep notes and write down every single one of them. So I know how many there have been.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item number five, 21 South Lynn Street Discussion. Counselor Mo is recusing himself.
Yeah. Mayor, I don't think I can get through my presentation in the time that we have left.
Sure. Which I am fully aware you won't be able to.
So I, I might suggest, of course, I can do half of it and we can break and do that, but I might suggest you jump to the budget and close out that item. And that will have to carry 21 South Lynn till after your next formal meeting here.
We'll come back to it. Okay. All right. People are okay with that?
Thinking the same thing over here, actually. So.
All right. We're gonna go to item number six. We'll return to item number five later. Item number six is fiscal year 2026 budget discussion.
Yeah. I think one of the things, and I, we kind of talked about this a little bit at our last meeting, but we're looking at the affordable housing funds. And we've gotten some feedback from the public, which is great, but as well. So I think one of the things on there was, there was a portion there that was a $200,000 amount that, that I would be interested in directing staff towards moving that, replacing that, restoring that to the, to the.
I was, wanna say the same thing. Yeah. Because I, I think this is not a while ago since we have $1 million in the budget. I think it was back 2018 when we started to $1 million. And before that, it was not, it was the same thing, right? The, you know, less than that. So if we are really going to talk about affordable housing and be bold, it's really going to be very bad looking when we reduce affordable housing. So maybe we can find a cut somewhere else.
Curious to, my, my understanding from our previous budget discussion is, is that one funding stream that was a shift, or at least a suggested shift, was to use TIF funds as opposed to allocated general funds to support Lytech projects rather than let that money sit in a sort of unused savings account, which is currently being unused. Would we propose continuing to add money to the Lytech piggy bank and use TIF?
I would, honestly, I would say let's, for the moment, say, put the $200,000 back into the fund and then we have discussion about sort of how this can be best done. I still think that TIF is a, is a lever that we need to start being serious about using and I think that we can use it to good effect. But I think that for the moment, let's just say, yes, we'll direct staff for $200,000 to go back into housing and then we come back and have a conversation about how best we use that money and then also how we can leverage other, other means to increase our, our potential for more affordable housing money.
I guess I'm curious if we want to continue to put money. I, maybe I'm using the wrong terms and please correct me if I'm wrong, but rather than put, and I'm fine spending $200,000 more dollars for affordable housing. It's been articulated by all of us as the highest priority. I just don't know. I would like to hear from professional staff whether putting $200,000 into the Lytech piggy bank is the right way for us to invest $200,000.
And I think that's the conversation.
Right. Yeah. And, and like, and that's, that's the piece that I, maybe the very specific pieces, like where, what's the right way to get the most housing and provide the most flexibility for them to jump at opportunities? So I kind of want to, curious what you think.
Yeah, I would, I would appreciate an opportunity to have a discussion with you at a future work session on how best to use that 200. I don't know that the Lytech set aside is the best way to deploy that. Now that said, I want to acknowledge that the trust fund has used a portion of that for admin expenses. So we have to acknowledge that about 10,000 of the one of the 200 is used for, for admin expenses. So we'll need to talk through that and what impacts that has on the, on the trust fund organization. But if you put the 200 back in, what I would suggest is that at a future work session before the start of the fiscal year, we would bring that distribution model back to you with some thoughts on how we might deploy that a little bit differently. Really just focus on that 200 piece. What you saw during the budget with the rest of the distribution would probably stay the same. But I, I think staff has some ideas and would like to talk about maybe how we can use that 200 a little bit differently.
And I, I guess that brings me back to what you were saying, Josh, of like what, like what is the funding source for it? Cause I think the budget proposal was about reducing the general fund allocation by 200,000. So I think if we want to say, let's stick with a million from the general fund on affordable housing, I am fine with that as well. We just know that that has to come from somewhere. So I again, will be advocating for shifting the unused patrol salaries from the open positions from the police department. And that would be a great use for a portion of that.
I think I would be more, I would be advocating something different. I'd be advocating, since we're already looking at a deficit budget again of 2.6, of rather than trying to go fishing through the rest of the budget, just increasing that to a 2.8. I think right now, what we're in, we can still.
I think right now what we're in, we can still field that for the city. We have some tough choices ahead of us. But I think for that 200,000, the 2.6 to 2.8, I think that's the simplest and moves us forward the best.
Is that a conversation that we need to have now or is that something that we can look? I mean, Mayor Protem has actually also offered up an additional suggestion that I tend to be behind in terms of looking at a portion of the Black Lives Matter money.
That would be, I mean, that would be something I'd be willing to talk about as well.
You know, perhaps that can also, this can, in advance of voting for budget, that we can have that conversation, but at 5:30.
But I'm not at all suggesting to take from the Black Lives Matter to boot back to the Affordable Housing Fund. It is affordable housing too for the Black Lives Matter.
No, that's, that's, yes.
Yeah, we are in the same vein, right?
We are, we are.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
What I don't want to see, I guess I should be more, I don't want to like go back and pull 200,000 from one of the other, you know, agencies that we're trying to help through that. You see what I'm saying? I don't want to see that kind of a.
I don't know, for me, I'm not talking about changing the process. I'm talking about just put the 200 back to the affordable housing, do the same process. I don't care. But you know, yeah, we need that back.
Okay, we're on the same page then, I think, too.
I wanted to maybe just clarify one question for our city manager. As I heard you say you'll bring something, some recommendations of how that 200,000, or maybe more specifically the Lytech could be utilized. Is that still with the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County involved in that conversation? Or it may not include them?
It could be. We don't have a proposal for you right now. What I was acknowledging was that a portion of the 200 that we have set aside for Lytech in recent years has been used for administrative support for the trust fund. So that's something that staff will think through and want to make sure that we're not going to impact the operations of the trust fund by shifting those dollars. So if we do want to shift them somewhere else, I think we got to look to figure out how to make the trust fund admin whole. And we can think through that at the staff level and present to you. So I think the simplest and the most kind of conservative thing to do right now is just put the 200 back in. It's reflected as an expense in the general fund. It will push the deficit up to 2.8. But throughout the year, you know, I've told you, my goal is to try to, through operations, bring that deficit down as much as we can. Some of that will naturally come down with unused salary if we have open positions across the organization. But we'll continue to do that. And just as you see in your IPs, this time around, you'll get quarterly financial reports and we can have more intentional discussions about how we're doing throughout the fiscal year so that you can track where that deficit is and determine if the council feels like you need to get involved in mid-year cuts or discussions on those types of things.
Sound like people are on board with that. Any other items for the fiscal 2026 budget discussion?
Hearing, just real quickly, remind us of what the upcoming calendar and process is left, if that's okay. Could you speak to?
Can you help with that, Nicole, please? Thank you.
So at our, well, we have to get the levy sent to the county by March 5th. So you'd have one more meeting to change the levy rate. And then March 11th, we would be setting, that's the property tax hearing again. So we'd be setting the budget here in April 4th. So we have to have the budget pretty well set in March and able to get all of the notices that we need to set the hearing to then publish the hearing, so.
Just for the public's benefit as well, so thank you.
And then does that, does March 11th work better for us having that conversation or?
No, I think the conversation, as long as the expenditure authorities and the budget, which is what you've directed here tonight, we can have that discussion at any time. Probably makes sense to do so before the start of the fiscal year, but it doesn't need to happen by March.
Okay. Does that make sense? Sorry. Yes.
Hearing no other discussion on the budget, we're going to move on to item number seven, which is council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees.
All of us except for the mayor participates in MPOJC. So at that last meeting, we had an update on Trip Connect, which is a really wonderful new service. It's helping people get to work for those times when public transportation is not available. And it seems like it's working really well. So I'm really excited about that.
2030 Better Together, Better Together 2030 actually granted them an award for their efforts the very next day.
Oh, nice.
Or two days later.
We also discussed the Crandic Railline, which is not currently being pursued because Crandic is not interested in using the rail lines at this time. And then it was also discussed that CAN Bus wants to renegotiate the equation of distribution of funds.
Just put it up straightforward. Okay. I love it. Any other comments from council?
Better Together 2030 did their annual awards ceremony and it was incredibly timely. So much good work being done in the area. And there were a lot of times people went off script, but all for the right reasons to really talk about the strength that the community has and groups have by doing work together and accomplishing things in the face of a lot of chaos and a lot of heartache. And it was truly wonderful. And Jeff was one of the presenters as well for work at Iowa City and the Builders Association, correct?
Home Builders Association and the Climate Action Collaboration?
Yes, so it was just, it was fantastic.
And you're on the board?
And I'm on the board, which is my, just open my mouth, yes.
Which is why you can speak on this agenda.
Exactly. Thank you for making sure it wasn't me just going off script.
Yes, all right. Anything else?
Comprehensive Plan Committee did meet also for their initial meeting two weeks ago Wednesday. So right after our last city council meeting and kicked that off. So I'll be looking forward to lots of community engagement. And it was a room full of people from very different parts of the city and different perspectives. So I'm really excited to see what comes from that process that will take quite a long time, so.
If hearing nothing else, we're going to take a recess and we will, yes, we'll come back after our formal meeting, so.
Thank you, Mayor Teague.
Yeah. Oh, it's fine. Oh, it's okay. Man, first.
We'll get started less than a minute? Yes. All right, it is six P M on February fourth, twenty twenty five, and I'm gonna call the City of Iowa City meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Here.
Bergus?
Here.
Harmson?
Here.
Mo?
Here.
Saleh?
Here.
Here. I wanna welcome you all to your city hall, and to those that are joining us virtual, welcome to you as well. First, uh, the second item on our agenda, our proclamations, two A is Black History Month. Whereas there is no American history without black history, and we can take time each February to commemorate that truth, we use this month and beyond to reflect on the heroes who preserved in the face of unconscionable discrimination. And whereas Black History Month grew out of Negro History Week, first proposed by scholar Carter G. Woodson in nineteen twenty six, who chose the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Fred- Frederick Douglass. Black History Month seeks to re-center the efforts of African Americans to tell a fuller story of America. And whereas this year's theme is African Americans and Labor, which focuses on the various and profound ways that work and working of all kinds, free and unfree, skilled and unskilled, vocational and voluntary, intersect with the collective experiences of black people. And whereas the theme intends to encourage broad reflections on intersections between black people's work and their workplaces and all their iterations and key moments, themes and events in black history and culture across time and space and throughout the U S, Africa, and the diaspora. And whereas like religion, social justice movements and education, studying African Americans' labor and labor struggles are important, organizing for new interpretations and reinterpretations of black past, present, and future. And whereas this Black History Month, let us draw inspiration and courage from the heroes who came before us as we continue to work toward full equality and representation. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of the City of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of February twenty twenty five to be Black History Month in the City of Iowa City. And to receive this, we have Bijou, um, who is gonna be accepting this, and Nema Ash as well. So let's give them a welcome.
Hello, Iowa City Council members, and thank you so much for allowing the Black Student Union to accept this proclamation of Black History Month. My name is Nema Maliavo, and I am one of the five executive members of the Black Student Union. The B S U at West High aims to create a safe space for students of color while at the same time educating on black history and fostering black excellence.
My name is Vanessa Shannon, and by promoting black excellence, we've hosted weekly meetings to unify the black students and promote allyship amongst the blacks community at West High. And by doing so, we've hosted a Juneteenth fundraiser last year, and we also took a trip to Alexander Elementary to promote black excellence, black art, and to promote black excellence to the youth.
My name is Cortez Bill, and the B S U is always working. We've worked with Voices of the Nile, which is a Sudanese nonprofit organization advocating for of the rights of Sudanese individuals facing war currently. We're also in the process of working with Humanize My Hoodie Under the Rite House to create a district-wide T-shirt um, where the profits will be going to all the ethnic minority groups across the ICCSD district, and ultimately spread the message of peace. And most recently, we've hosted a speaking engagement at the University of Iowa Human Rights Week, and we also had the opportunity to present an exhibit that's still up currently to this day. We're currently working on many Black History Month events, and one that we wanna focus in on is the Black Business Fair, where we bring together over twenty black-owned businesses in our area to promote black entrepreneurship and to help the businesses garner foot traffic.
Hello, my name is Rowan. For the Black Student Union at West, celebrating Black History Month is more than just celebrating our history. It's about educating youth of all color about the real contributions made by black people in the U S and across the world. In honor of Black History Month, we'll be hosting a plethora of activities, including but not limited to business fair, a field trip to the African American Museum in Cedar Rapids, as well as inviting notable district, uh, notable black leaders from the district to come speak about their experience as black educators as well as individuals. Thank you.
Great, thank you all.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I want to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to the Iowa City City Council for the proclamation, for proclaiming February as Black History Month. This recognition is a powerful reminder of the importance of black history in shaping the world we live in today. I deeply appreciate your commitment to celebrating the contribution and resilience of black leaders, not only during this month, but throughout the year. Black History Month is not just a celebration, it is a time to reflect and learn on enduring impact and immense contribution that black leaders and activists such as Martin Luther King Junior have had in shaping our world, whether in science, art, politics, or culture. Their courage and vision had led the foundation for the progress we continue to strive for today. Black History Month also invite us to continue to fight for racial justice and equality, not only by acknowledging the past, but by actively working for a more inclusive future. Celebrating Black History Month means sharing stories of triumph, struggle, and resilience. It's mean recognizing that black history is American history, and the stories of black Americans, past and present, must be lifted and heard in every corner of our society. It's a chance to engage with history that shapes the life of, uh, the, the li- the, the life lived experience of so many, and it's called, it is a call to action to create a world where every individual is valued for who they are. As we celebrate Black History Month, I also want to highlight the importance of the Democratic Republic of Congo, D R C, a nation rich in natural resources that are integral to the global economy. The D R C is a home to mineral that are essential for modern technology and the development of sustainable energy solutions. These includes cobalt, coltan, tin, gold, copper, diamond, lithium, et cetera. These minerals are, are at the heart of the technology that power our lives today. From the phone we use every day to communicate, to the elec- electric vehicles that pr- that presents the future of a clean transportation and energy. However, the very resources that power the global economy are also tied to the ongoing conflict in the D R C. A war that has caused immense human suffering, loss of lives, and displacement of millions of people since nineteen ninety-eight. The conflict in the D R C must end. The people of Congo deserve peace, stability, and opportunity to thrive. The mineral that are to cr- that are so critical to global industry must not come at a cost of human lives. We cannot allow the wealth of the country's resources to continue to fuel violence and exploitation. We must raise our voices in support of peace and justice for the people of Congo and demand an end to the violence that continue, the devastating of this beautiful nation. As we celebrate Black History Month, we must also remember that black life, lives, black communities, and black futures are tied to the global fight for peace and justice. It's a call to action for all of us to not only reflect on history, but to actively participate in shaping a more just and peaceful world. Once again, thank you so much to the Iowa City City Council for the important proclamation. May we continue to celebrate Black History Month, advocate for peace, and work together for a better future for all, all people, whether in Iowa City, and Congo, and Sudan, or around the world. Thank you.
Thank you all. We're gonna move on to two B proclamation, Lunar New Year. Whereas Lunar New Year originated in Asian countries more than four thousand years ago and is celebrated by billions of people around the world, including the United States, during the first new moon of the calendar in February each year. And whereas Lunar New Year is an official state holiday in California, Colorado, New Jersey, New York, and there is an opportunity for other states to adopt this official state holiday to recognize the culture and positive contributions of the Asian and Pacific Islander communities. And whereas Lunar New Year has been officially listed as a United Nations holiday in the U N calendar of conferences and meetings starting in twenty twenty four. It is celebrated by residents from China, Vietnam, Korea, Singapore, Malaysia, Brunei, and Mongolia, and millions worldwide with community activities, cultural performances, and the reunification of family and friends. And whereas Lunar New Year is an opportunity for people to learn about A A P I cultures and traditions, especially in light of the rise in hate crimes against the A P A A P I communities. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of the City of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the first new moon of the calendar year on January twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, to be Lunar New Year. And Iowa City recognizes the cultural and historical significance of Lunar New Year, the year of the snake, and expresses our deepest appreciation for A A, for A P A P A and Asian American Pacific Islanders and all individuals who celebrate this significant occasion, and wish Asian American Pacific Islanders and all individuals who observe this holiday a happy and prosperous New Year. And to receive this proclamation, we have two individuals. We have the Vice President, Yawon Sun, as well as, tell me your name one more time. Alyssa? All right, great. I should've wrote it down.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yen Wen Soon, and I currently serve as the Vice President of A P A P A, the Asian Pacific Islander American Public Affairs Association, Eastern Iowa Chapter. A P A P A is a national nonprofit organization dedicated to advancing Asian communities by promoting Asian culture and enhancing the leadership and civic engagement of Asian Americans. On behalf of A P A P A, I would like to extend my sincere thanks to Mayor Bruce Teague of Iowa City and his administration for recognizing this significant Asian holiday. Traditionally, Asian communities celebrated the new year based on the lunar calendar, known as the Spring Festival. This celebration lasts for fifteen days and includes cultural activities such as dragon or lion dances on the first day, culminating in a lantern festival on the final day. According to the World Population Review, Iowa City is home to five thousand one hundred fifty-six Asian residents, comprising six point eighty-five percent of the city total population, not including students from Asian countries. Your recognition of Lunar New Year enables many Asian families to come together, whether in person or virtually, with relatives and friends to honor and embrace their cultural traditions. I take a great pride in being a resident of Iowa City where our mayor and his team actively promoted Asian culture, making us feel welcome and warm in this diverse community, especially during the cold winter way months. I would also like to thank the city again for proclaiming May twenty twenty first as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and May eighteen, twenty twenty one, as Asian America and Pacific Islander Day against bullying. These proclamations made us as immigrants feel safe, valued, and included. Now, I would like to invite Alicia Zhou, a high school student, to share a few words expressing her appreciation for your recognition of this Lunar New Year.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Zhou, and I'm currently a sophomore at West High. Although I was born in Iowa City, my family moved to Suzhou, China when I was four years old due to my father's job. Living in China for several years significantly shaped my identity and fueled my deep interest in Asian, especially Chinese culture. In twenty twenty-three, we returned to Iowa City, and while I cherish American culture, I also hold a special place in my heart for my roots. I'm thrilled that Iowa City recognizes Asian Lunar New Year. One of the most meaningful experi- experiences since my return has been participating in Lunar New Year events organized by A P A P A. For two consecutive years, I've had the honor of performing in the Lunar New Year celebrations, where I felt a profound connection between my cultural heritage and the diver- diverse community here in Iowa City. I strongly believe that immigrant ideas play a crucial role in today's world. They break down stereotypes, foster mutual respect, and provide a platform for celebrating differences while discovering common ground. Having lived in both China and the United States, I see myself as a culture ambassador, bridging, bridging the gap between the two nations, promoting mutual understanding and working towards global harmony. Thank you.
Thank you all, and wonderful celebration on Sunday. Yes, all right. We're gonna move on to our next proclamation, two C, Royal Hijab Day, and this will be read by our Mayor Pro Tim.
Whereas the people of Greater Iowa City, Great City of Iowa City, who come from a variety of backgrounds are united in certain foundational beliefs such as affirming the inherited dignity of all person, the right of every person to be treated with respect, and the right of all residents to participate there in their religion freely. And whereas we recognize Saturday, February first, twenty twenty five, as a World Hijab Day, and whereas the hijab, a traditional veil which cover a woman's hair, neck, and chest, and have been very important to the history of Islam, it is mean to promote dignity and respect for women while maintaining modesty and respect for religion faith. And whereas World Hijab Day was started by Nazaa, Nazama Khan, a resident of New Jersey, as a day set aside for women of different culture who do not normally wear hijab, to experience wearing one for the day. Its purpose is to encourage religious tolerance, culture understanding, and international solidarity. And whereas on February first, twenty thirteen, the World Hijab Day, in recognition of millions of Muslim women who used to wear the hijab and live a life of religious faith. And whereas, since its inception, World Hijab Day has participated for all over the world, and whereas to combat leaders, leaders in the American Muslim community and working tirelessly, are, are working tirelessly to show that the wearing of hijab is a choice, a freedom, and a blessing, as well as to educate their follower residents about Islam in ways which are relevant and meaningful. And whereas, one of Americans' greatest strengths as a society has been our ability to embrace our different faiths and allow their members to express themselves freely. In this, in spirit, World Hijab Day encourages the wearing of the hijab as a proud display of religious faith and communal boarding, bonding, which will make us stronger as a nation and more accepting of others. And whereas, it is the sense of the City of Iowa City honor those important event which remind us of the rich and diverse heritage of our great city of the Anation while encouraging greater religious tolerance and understanding in our communities. Now therefore, I Mizaar Saleh, on behalf of Bruce Teague, the Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim Saturday, February first, twenty twenty five, to be World Hijab Day. And here to accept is Vienna Godora.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Dear respectful members of the Iowa City City Council, on behalf of Marion Girls Club, the Muslim Women, and all those who stand in solidarity with us, we thank you for declaring February first of twenty twenty five as a World Hijab Day. For women who wear the hijab, this day is a moment of feeling of being understood, respected, and empowered. It is a time for reclaiming our voices and telling our own stories. For far too long, others have spoken on our behalf, misrepresenting who we are and what we stand for. No more. We are taking back that narrative. We are scholars, activists, professionals, doctors, entrepreneurs. We are mothers, wives, and leaders in our communities. We take pride in choosing to serve God through the hijab, following His command to wear it as a means of liberation from societal misogyny. This proclamation is not just a powerful step toward fostering understanding and respect between communities, but also a recognition of the dignity and the strength of women who wear the hijab proudly as an expression of faith, identity, and cultural pride. Muslim women who choose to wear the hijab are resilient, strong, and deserve nothing less than to be treated with dignity and respect. Just like Mary, the mother of Jesus, peace be upon them both. The hijab signals that this woman is not seeking validation through her physical appearance. She is beyond the surface. It compels those around her to approach with respect and to acknowledge her intellect and abilities, leaving no room to dismiss her qualifications or contributions based on her gender. Muslim women are free and liberated women. Over then a thousand four hundred years ago, Islam granted women rights that were groundbreaking at the time, rights that the so-called modern Western world is still working to achieve. As Muslim women, we are liberated from the ever-shifting standards of society. We do not seek validation from others or from others' gazes or by conforming to the trends. We live courageously, authentically, and our worth is defined by our connection with our own God, not by the fleeting fashion. Islam has always been a modern religion, and it does not need to be liberated in the way that some might claim. By officially recognizing this day, we have opened the door to greater dialogue, to acceptance and solidarity with the Muslim women and the girls worldwide. Once again, thank you for this meaningful proclamation. Your support makes a difference and inspires us to continue striving for a world under that where we understood, respected, and where the inclusion thrive. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and we got to see many of the individuals from the community come earlier this week to take some photos. So really appreciate you all being here today. All right, we are moving on to our consent agenda items, which is numbers three through seven. Can I get a motion, please? So moved, Mo.
Second, Harmson.
Anyone from the public like to address any item that is on our consent agenda? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one online or in person, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Motion passes, six to zero. We are on to item number eight, which is our community comment. Uh, public comment is intended so that members of the public may be heard by council because community comment is for items not properly noticed on the agenda. Can't, council cannot engage in discussion or debate due to open meeting laws. Only in-person comments will be allowed for, uh, community comment. Public comment for specific agenda items must be directly related to that agenda item may be made in person or remotely. So welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Hey, I'm Brandon Ross, uh, hello council, mayor, staff. Black History Month, Dr. King, uh, he said that the two sides of the same coin, racism and capitalism. Dr. King said that capitalism does not take care of the masses, it only takes care of the upper classes, and we have to remember that. Dr. King supported strikes and workers. Dr. King also said that a country that spends more on military than it spends on social benefit is heading down the road to spiritual bankruptcy. And, uh, these are some of the, the things, just some of the things he said, uh, on this day. Uh, not on this day, but, uh, in his day, and, uh, he, uh, he, we were, we lost him. Uh, we, we lost one of the great political activists and great minds and great spiritual leaders in our, in our country's history. And there won't be another person like him. Uh, you know, you can look, but you, there won't be. And African American people, uh, have done so much for this country. Without the African American people, there would be no economy. They did all the physical work, uh, for many, many years under enslavement, and this is true in many of the Western countries, and the African countries provided basically for the West, uh, pretty much their capital advantage. And so I would like to just say, uh, thanks for African American people, and to keep these things in mind. With that, I would like to mention, uh, that locally we had a bank robbery, uh, not too long ago, and, uh, the man, uh, robbed a bank for a thousand dollars and ran into the public library and was found on the computers using the free and was found on the computers using the free to the public resources of our very good public library. And the police drove up in cars and guns and everything went in there. Unfortunately, no shot was fired, and the man was, was removed. And apparently, I thought, we found out later that the man had actually told the policeman that he, he wanted to go back to jail and that if they didn't take him back to jail, that, that he would rob a bank. Well, that doesn't seem very sporting, but he didn't tell them which bank he would rob. And basically, that was his whole goal, holding up the bank. He had a gun, but he had no bullets. The woman, the teller, I guess, gave him a thousand dollars, and he made it as far as the library. As far as I understand, federal law means that he gets about twenty years for holding up a bank. And that's where he wanted to go. It's a sad state of affairs when people in our community, they don't have any resources and they're outside in the cold. And, you know, because we don't have enough affordable housing or anything like that. And that a person like that, who is a human being, had to do such an act. And then, you know, will be in jail, and that was his best option. We can do better. We have the biggest prison population in the world. And then we should do better. We should do better locally. Thank you.
Thank you. And if anyone wants to speak, please raise your hand at this time so that I know, all right? And there is a sign-in sheet here. And in the back, there are all some stickers that you can pre-sign and just drop it in the basket. I'll ask the next speaker to come forth and please state your name and city you're from. You'll have up to three minutes. Welcome.
Wonderful. Good evening, council members and staff. I'm Jessica Andino. I'm a resident of Iowa City. And I stand before you today as the executive director of the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition. At the Coalition, we amplify voices throughout the entire county, not just in Iowa City, to continue to voice affordable housing as our top concern. I was here to discuss the proposed reduction in the Affordable Housing Fund in fiscal year twenty six and make some important comments and maybe statistics at you about why we truly believe that that fund should be maintained. But, you know, you just had a work session in which I listened to and was happy to listen to because it seemed that council members that are sitting here today were clearly in favor of maintaining that Affordable Housing Fund at the amount of originally placed fiscal years. So we greatly appreciate that. So instead of bombarding you with statistics and clearly persuasive arguments on my behalf, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for listening to us at the Coalition. Thank you for listening to residents that continue to state that affordable housing is one of their top priorities. And thank you to staff for making time and opportunity to talk and to listen to us and have persuasive conversations between us, though we might not always agree, but we always come to a common understanding that residents of Iowa City are special. We're a very, very special place, and affordable housing will continue to be our top priority. I look forward to collaborating with you, staff, and council members. And together, we can hopefully find some successful solutions for this issue in the next coming years. So thank you.
Thank you. Just come on down. Yes, welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Carolyn Sheriff Ryan. I'm a permanent resident of Iowa City and current graduate student in the University of Iowa's School of Urban Planning and Public Affairs. I want to sincerely thank you for restoring the full one million dollar contribution to the Johnson County Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This decision will have a real and lasting impact on our community. As you know, Housing Trust Fund has the proven ability to leverage outside investment. And based on its own reports, every five million invested leverages seventy million in additional financing for housing. That means your decision to restore the two hundred thousand dollars that was proposed to be cut protects two point eight million dollars in potential housing investment. This funding isn't just a moral commitment to this basic human need. It's a sound fiscal decision. New housing developments supported through this investment will contribute to the city's tax base. If we assume a property tax rate of one point five percent, a three million dollar development would generate four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in property tax revenue annually, far exceeding the two hundred thousand dollar short-term savings from the proposed, proposed cut. Over thirty years, that would have been a loss of thirteen point five million dollars in property tax revenue. That said, I remain deeply concerned that this cut was even considered. Every member of this council has identified affordable housing as a core priority. Yet, the fact that it was on the table suggests that that commitment is not fully embedded in the city's shared vision and budgetary process. If housing is truly a top priority, it must be treated as such consistently and at every level of decision-making. I urge you to take steps to codify affordable housing as a protected budgetary priority so that future funding and zoning, future funding and zoning decisions align with the values you have publicly stated. People deserve it. Your leadership on this issue is critical, not just at this moment, but in ensuring that fair, accessible, and affordable housing remains a sustained investment for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Missy Forbes, I'm from Iowa City. I'm a little bit out of order, but I'm the executive director of Four Seas. And I wanted to follow up just with some of the comments during the work session and also just to follow up with my email that I sent to council. First of all, I want to thank Jeff and his staff for the work that they do, scoring and all of the things they do with the aid to agencies and under their purview. I always rely on staff for technical assistance and other things and communication just about what's going on in the city. And so that is why I take very seriously my communication to HCDC and also to the council. And I wanted to just follow up with some of Counselor Alter's comments and then to Counselor Burgess's comments as well. I, in my communication to HCDC, our FY twenty four data was also, was not reflective of the work that we do. And so I want to, I addressed that with HCDC, but I wanted to also just come here and talk to you about that as well. I have worked with United Way staff to write that ship. But it, as I said, it doesn't speak to the data that we were reporting. It was inherited data points from before my time and again, not reflective of the work that we do. And so I wanted to point that out. What I, another thing that I want to talk about, especially considering that the funding cycle that we're looking at is another two-year cycle. And my request is that our previous funding remain static. Is that because childcare, like affordable housing, is always listed as a priority and a concern, as a barrier to, to, it's always pointed as a barrier. It's listed as priorities. Our registered apprenticeship program, which was recognized as Better Together twenty thirty as innovative programming, is also something that aligns with the city's priority regarding workforce. And we are the only local agency that specifically addresses issues around childcare and workforce, as I noted. But you'll also need our expertise when you look at the navigating the purchase of land north of Iowa City where there is no accessible, affordable childcare in that part of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Yeah, Perry Lenz, and Iowa City. Anyway, the issue I want to start, talk about is the issue, I don't know if you've talked much about, about immigration. We need to really stand up for immigrants, make sure we're supportive of them. There's these ice raids that have been going on all over the country, like in Chicago. I heard there was one in Muscatine. They can now go into schools, churches, public libraries, hospitals, all sorts of public institutions. I know this might be hard to do, but at least take a stand, like push back against this or whatever, and support the immigrant community and do whatever you can to support these people. So this is an issue that's been on my mind, and I volunteer with the Catholic Worker House, and they're talking about doing what they can, you know, to help out the immigrants. So anyway, I would like to see the city be supportive or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Asherif, I'm with the Center for Worker Justice. And I'm, I would like really to thank the City Council, city staff for the efforts that has been always supportive for our organization. I also wanted to address the, the issue regarding the city funding for organizations like ours, the smaller and mid-sized organizations. Specifically, I would like to talk about aid to agency and the development of this and the way the Center for Worker Justice is kind of scored and marked. I think this funding is very important for the organization. It has been always the backbone that helped us support a broad and wide groups of our, of our community here. It always helped our immigrant groups. It always helped our, get us move on with our, what do you call it? The low-wage workers. I think it, it is more important now than ever for the, because we, because of the challenges those people are facing right now. The city, we've heard that city talking about the capacity of the organizations as an important component, and I really appreciate that. But I also think that building the capacity of organization will depend on this kind of funds to support it. We've been working with the city staff, trying to lean on the resources and learn how to really improve and really develop our capacity. We've been doing so many things. We responded to kind of recommendations from city staff by hiring new people and by getting like a more professional grant writers who can support us, all those things. It is obviously they need this kind of fund. But at the same time, we hope that we continue working with the city staff to really communicate in a better way so we can improve our capacity to be able to do more and support more for this community. So I really just like urge the city council in here and the city staff to consider continuing providing this fund for us. It is important. It just shows that how important it is to prioritize the people, prioritize the same groups that we talk about all the time, the immigrant groups, the workers, the low-wage workers, how to support those people in this time and into the future. So thank you so much, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Haley Wilson, and I live in Coralville. And I'm a nervous speaker. And I first want to say thank you for all of your hard work and everything that you guys do. And I want to dogpile on everyone's emphasis on how important housing funding is. Johnson County actually has housing as one of their major healthcare priorities right now because it's so impactful for the health of citizens and the safety of citizens or community members that are living in Johnson County. And I really appreciate hearing the community talk about this and hopefully seeing the support of everyone who has power to ensure that different things are funded and not defunded, especially when it's such a concern that we've identified through three years of like analytics and like surveying and all of that stuff. So I really appreciate the work that you all have done so far. And I hope that the support and advocacy continues and everyone realizes that it impacts all of the communities that are in danger in our current environment. It's a very, there's a, not a great word to use, I guess, a weird time that we're in right now. And I think we've got a very strong community that can band together and make sure that we're supporting people that are most vulnerable to the dangers that might approach everyone very, very quickly. And I just want to emphasize the importance of housing. Like that is impactful for not just housing, but health and mental health and food security and anything that has to do with built environment, all of those things. And so knowing that you guys are working towards that goal is very lovely. Like I, I'm very happy about that, but I want to ensure that, you know, we've, we've got a lot of data supporting how important housing is for making sure that our community is safe, healthy, happy, and being able to be the best person that they are meant to be. And housing is so important for that. Like I've had physicians tell me we're doing the boring surveys that everyone hates taking, that they wish that they could prescribe housing for someone who is experiencing health concerns because they need to have this space to make sure that they are healthier and that they can contribute what they have to society and engage in community. And so I really appreciate you all, and I want to thank you. And I hope that everyone knows that, you know, reach out to.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to have you just sign in there. I do recognize that Missy did not sign in, but yes. Anyone else wanting to speak that is present here today? Please. And besides the speaker here, anyone else want to speak? Please raise your hand. Okay, so we have two more speakers to go. Great. And I'll just remind folks online that our public comment on a non-agenda item is only for those that are in council chambers. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Greg Hearns, Iowa City.
Welcome, yes.
Good afternoon or evening.
Good afternoon.
Spent a while aside, address the council. But I have a kind of love-hate relationship with you guys. I think the council's always done a great job of listening and kind of understanding, you know, the needs of the community. I'm kind of biased. I've lived in Iowa City for over fifty years. And in my opinion, Iowa City and Johnson County is the greatest city and county in the whole state, and I stand by that. But with that being said, I'm here to address the aid to agencies funding as well. In the past, we've had some issues with our reporting and things like that. None of it was based on any malicious intent. It was always, you know, the situation where you know what you don't know. And whenever we found out that we weren't in compliance and there were things we needed to do, we tried to work with whoever we needed to work with to fix those issues and move forward. We received legacy funding in the past, and I just, I don't try to pretend like I understand all the rhetoric and the scoring and everything that went into deciding who gets funding and not. But I do understand that all these agencies and organizations are very important to this community. It was, they what makes this community great and what makes this community an inclusive and accepting community. Again, like I said, I can't express or articulate all the good work that CWJ does for the community. It would take the members to come in and tell their stories to actually articulate that. But what I'm here to do is to ask you guys to, and I've never had a problem with you guys, you know, reconsidering things before, but to reconsider, you know, the, the way they're doing the scoring. I guess I don't understand it. Maybe somebody could explain it to me better. But I don't think that there's any organization or agency in this community that should be shut out of funding. I just don't think it should happen because the things that they do are too important. And, you know, I'm not just speaking on behalf of CWJ. I'm speaking of all the nonprofits in the city. So that being said, again, I wish you reconsider the way they're doing the scoring and the funding for the aid to agencies. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll invite the last speaker up at this time. Oh, you know, you can just throw it in the basket. You don't have to peel it off. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, council members and staff, thanks very much for hearing me. I just want to talk very briefly about two things. One, your decision to go ahead and restore the two hundred thousand dollars to the Affordable Housing Allocation.
Please state your name and city you're from.
Oh, I'm sorry, Charlie Eastham, Iowa City. That was a great decision, and I'm very, very pleased that you reached that tonight, and we're going to pursue it together. Also, I would like to talk about the Center for Worker Justice. I'm a member of the Board of the CWJ and the Treasurer. I'm also a member of the School Board. And one of the things that really helps me in my coping with current situ, the current situation we all face ourselves, we find ourselves in now, is that we, we work collaboratively together to resolve issues in this community as best we can with the resources that we are able to put together now and anticipate putting together in the future. The request the CWJ, CWJ is making to restore the, our aid to agency allocation or something close to it is. close to it is in keeping with that collaboration and partnership with, with you, staff, and other agencies, other organizations within the community. We think we'll be able to do that to your satisfaction. As other people have said, the center has, has had conversations with the staff about our, about our application for current aid, legacy agency funding. One of the things that's been mentioned was the gap in proposed numbers of people served in different categories in our actual report. And I think this, listening to Councilmember Burgess, I think you've totaled up about 180 different instances of service in 2023, which was less than the, our stated goals, but that's also a considerable number of folks. And I can tell you, every time I go into the CWJ's office, people are there seeking and receiving service. We are not, we are not idle, as most agencies within this community are not idle in our service provision. So I hope we will continue our collaboration, and we'll find ourselves working together in the next few months. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thanks to everybody that came and spoke. We're going to move on to item nine, planning and zoning matters. Nine A is rezoning Cardinal Heights. Ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 27.68 acres, a property located east of Camp Cardinal Boulevard and west of Camp Cardinal Road from low-density multifamily residential zone with a planned development overlay to low-density multifamily residential zone with a planned development overlay. And this is a pass and adopt item. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Sala.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. If you're in person, please step up. CNO one, online or in person, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Onto item number nine B, rezoning Western Homes. Ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 31.65 acres of property located east of Camp Cardinal Road and north of Gathering Place Lane for medium-density single-family residential with a planned overlay development. And this is a motion to pass and adopt as well. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second, Mo.
Move by Sala, second by Mo. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. We're going to move on to our regular formal agenda item, which is items number 10. 10A is charter amendments. This is an ordinance amending the Iowa City Charter as recommended by the Charter Review Commission. Could I get a motion to give second consideration?
Moved, Mo.
Second, Alter.
All right. And then I'll welcome you to give comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. John Ballmer, 10th Princeton Court, Iowa City. I just wanted to appear again. I'm here with my vice chair, Molly Casera. If there are any questions, we appreciate your consideration. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this process. And I'd like to read the names of the, the members if I could, because they put in a lot of time, and there was a lot of good discussion. Myself, John Ballmer, Chair, Vice Chair, Molly Casera, Susan Craig, John Deeth, Doreen Denning, Mackenzie Daru, Matt Hayek, Bijou Maliabo, and Jennifer Patel. I personally want to thank each and every one of them, and I thought we had a very diverse group, and we arrived at our conclusions, and I think we forwarded a unanimous charter to you, the amendments. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Of course, how ironic, tonight, we have a primary for District C. Now, we did, we had, when the election was in 2023, we had nobody. So I'm, we're making progress. So let's just hope we can keep up, keep it up. So.
We are.
I, I've, I've really been privileged to be, and I told you last time, and I'm going to tout you, this is my 50th anniversary when I first ran for the council. And a lot of emotions for me, and feel very strongly about this community, and, and I'm certainly not going to go away. I'll, I'll be available. So, and again, thank you all very much.
And thank you, former Mayor Ballmer. Yes, and our Chair for the Charter Commission. So thank you. Thanks to you all for being here today and to all of the charter members. I'm going to open it up for anyone from the public to address this agenda item. If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. If you're in person, please step forward. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. We're going to move on to item number 10B, joint law enforcement facility. Councilor Mo will be recusing himself from this item. This is a resolution approving cost-sharing agreement with Johnson County for explore, exploration of functional parameters and conceptual requirements for a joint law enforcement facility shared with Johnson County. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Sala.
All right. And then I'll turn it over to our city manager, Jeff Run.
Thank you, Mayor. As you and council are aware, the city recently completed a space needs study for our city hall building here, including police and fire. At the same time we were doing that, the Johnson County Sheriff's Office was doing a space needs study for their facilities as well. Both studies have recommended pursuit of a new law enforcement or, or new facilities to serve both agencies. And in conversations with the county over the last few months, we've all agreed pretty heartily that it's in the best interest of the, the public for at least an exploration of what it would mean to co-locate those facilities together. And so what is before you is a cost-sharing agreement with the county in which we would explore just that. What would be the efficiencies, cost savings, benefits, et cetera, of pursuing a joint law enforcement center together? That would include the Johnson County Sheriff's Office, jail, and Iowa City Police Department. The way that this has been logistically kind of set up is that the county would hold the agreement, so the team at Shive Hattery that led their space needs study would, would be the primary consultant that would do this work, and that would be under the direction of the county and close consultation with us at the city, of course. Our space needs consultant, OPN, would be a subconsultant and work with Shive to kind of infuse our data into that process. I've been working with Chief Liston and county officials on the scope, and we landed on a scope that totals $63,800 plus expenses, and the proposal is to split that 50/50. So what's before you is a cost-sharing agreement that would commit the city to the $31,900 plus 50% of expenses for that initial scope. We anticipate that sometime later this summer, we would be able to present those results to both you and the county, and at that point, there could be decisions made on what those next steps would be. It is very non-committal after that. This is really just the study to explore the efficiencies of working together on a facility. Happy to answer any questions?
What's the timeline on this?
We would, we would hope to this summer. I think we roughly said probably five to six months to complete the study, once the agreement's executed.
Does that include location, potential, potential locations? Not?
Thank you for, for bringing that up. So the location specifically that we have in mind is at the corner of Riverside Drive and the highway, so the intersection of Highway one, Highway six. We refer to that as our old Public Works Campus. That's where our current equipment building is. Our former refuse building is still standing. The transit building sits along the river, but we would be specifically looking at that corner property to see if that would be a good location. I think from a response standpoint and just proximity of the jail to the courthouse, it works very well, but we have to make sure that it can fit the site well and that there aren't any other concerns with that site. If we deem that site is not okay, or if the elected bodies decide that that's not a preferred location, what this study would produce is some site parameters to say if you need to go out and acquire land, here are the basic parameters that you would need to fit the, the building that they would be recommending, and we would have to go out in concert with the, the county and search for that property to acquire.
Well, there'd be other, so just with that same thought process, so you, you've already identified one location. Are there other locations that you all are identifying, or you're just going to set the parameters for other locations?
Correct. No other locations at this time. This one was selected simply because we have ownership of it, and it felt like a, a good location from an operational standpoint. Again, just thinking about response times and, and travel patterns of those two operations. If we deem it's not acceptable for any, any reason, then we're going to have a set of kind of conditions to say we need to go look for a property that is of X acres and, you know, whatever other conditions are identified by the consulting team. So we'll, we'll be much, much better positioned to go out and have those land acquisition discussions at that time.
I'll continue with questions and hold my comments for deliberation. The other question I have is, so this is thought to be sharing the resources, so sharing the building, conference rooms, that type of stuff. Is there any discussions that would take place during this study to study partnerships, I guess, sta, shared staff?
Yeah.
Or any other type of 28E agreement if our staff is needing some additional supports?
Yeah, I, I think the intent is to, is to explore everything. What does it look like to be able to, to share resources? We have, there's no discussion about combining into one agency as two, two distinct operations and still will be, but if there's efficiencies and whether that's front desk staff, custodial staff, any number of other areas in which we both have staff dedicated, we'll absolutely look at that. And we do that now to some extent. We, we work together for investigative purposes. For example, you've heard that presentation before from, from Chief Liftin, Liston. So this process will, will take that one step further and explore what those opportunities are, but again, it's a non-committal type of exercise.
Will the study include investigation about the uses for or of the current jail site? Or is this really just saying?
Uh, can you repeat that, please? Just to make sure I understand.
Will it also include, I don't know, recommendations or thoughts about what the current jail?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, it does not address the future of that.
What, future use?
Correct.
I was like, coming around with all these words that were not that, but that's what I meant.
But the current jail is completely Johnson County, or also we done it the same way that you are thinking to do this?
The, the current jail is owned by Johnson County.
Completely.
Completely, yes. Iowa City has no interest in, property, ownership interest in that, in that jail.
And just as far as the scope of the study, I know our space needs study about city hall versus the county's sort of space needs study for the jail, the county one was, I think, at least interpreted by the board or people, members from, of the public that had more design elements. This is, as I understand, just more sort of like, not really to the design part yet, but about square footage and, like you said, programmatic overlap, staffing efficiencies.
Correct. Right. So if you recall, our space needs study didn't produce any, any designs. It was really just what block of space? Once we combined the needed office space and locker room space and fitness room space, all that kind of, all those kind of things, this is how much square foot we need. We're going to take those individual components, those building blocks that, that form the total square footage, and just see where that aligns with the, with the same kind of numbers that the county developed under their agreement.
Hearing no more questions. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. If you're in council chambers, please step forward. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. I think it makes a lot of sense to go this route, so thanks to the Johnson County Board of Supervisors for signing a resolution to make this possible. And I, I, I do think that this is a great step because of our facility needs, as well as trying to see if there's any opportunities to, to cost save while still producing great services within the law enforcement area. I, I want to make one comment about the corner of Riverside Drive and Highway six, and this comes as no surprise to many individuals. I am not for placing a, a facility, a, a law enforcement facility at that location site. I, isn't, is no disrespect to law enforcement. I really believe that that is a great opportunity. It's like, is very visible for us to do something different that is a city-owned site, and I think that we can come together, you know, the, the meeting of the minds to figure out what would be a great opportunity to put there, to really showcase the heart of our community. And so with that being said, I just wanted to be known from the beginning that, that is not a location that I believe our law enforcement should have a big facility at.
And, and was there reason for that?
I, I really believe that is, is a very, it's a great opportunity for the city to showcase something that really highlights our values as a, a land that we own. I understand that the land behind it, which is where our current transit facility is, you know, we really can't build anything on there. That was the old landfill, and then we know that the ground is sinking, but I do believe that there is greater opportunity for something there that would be very meaningful, not to dismen, dismiss or diminish our law enforcement facility needs, but I, personally, I think in that location, I would like to see something different. Any other comments?
When we're going to be discussing all this, like, yeah, timeline?
Uh, time.
Yeah, so I'd anticipate in the summer, there would be a discussion of the representation of the results, and then probably would behoove the, the city and the county to have a joint work session, whether that's to receive the information or discuss it if it's presented individually.
So like, that's where we can discuss location and everything, or before that?
Correct. Yeah. Well, this, this particular study does look at this site, and there's, there's expenses dedicated towards looking at this site, right? The, the team at Shive and any of their subconsultants is going to be doing initial site investigation here, which is really kind of a preliminary look. It's looking back at various studies that the city has done on this site. We've done environmental studies on this site. They're going to review those. They're going to look at FAA regulations because of the proximity of the airport. They'll look at floodplains and lots of different public sources that can do initial screenings of sites. So there is some expense dedicated towards investigating the site, but it's not, i, i, if at the end of the day, the elected bodies decide not to pursue, not to pursue this site, the study will still produce very valuable information that will talk about construction savings, operational savings, as well as, again, give us those site parameters to, to go out and look to acquire property, because I don't believe outside of this property, there's anything that the city owns or the county owns that would probably be able to be, you know, service property for the, this type of facility.
And Jeff, just as you were saying that the study will help as far as any other location, would it be true that the information that we're obtaining about the redevelopment of that site could be helpful if it was something other than this joint facility?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it would. Thank you.
Hearing no other comments? Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo? Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero, with one recusal from Mo. Because we mentioned his name. Because he mentioned his name. All right, we're on to item number 11, announcements of vacancies new, 11A. It's going to be the Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term, April 7, 2025, through April 1, 2029. Community Police Review Board, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30, 2026. And the Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30, 2026. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 25, 2025. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved. Burgess?
President Sala.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. We're on to item number 12, which is announcements of vacancies previous, 12A. Airport rezoning, Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals, HVAC Professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woolon Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We're on to item number 13, City Council Information.
Last week, Thursday, there was a meeting about the Burlington Street Bridge. It was attended and people called in. So it was really wonderful. Thanks to the consultants for doing a lot of community outreach. There's a survey available that people can respond to through, I believe, February 14th. Lots of conversations about safety, about bicycle safety and about feeling comfortable at that intersection. So I think that was really helpful to inform how they're going to design it. Also, Counselor Alter and I went to the Airport Legislative Forum over the weekend and got a tour of the Eastern Iowa Airport. We jokingly said for the new addition, we would like Mayor Teague to say, welcome to Eastern Iowa Airport. Come down to Iowa City where it's awesome and amazing. We don't know if they're going to take us up.
Love it.
On that. However, it's a really important economic driver for our region to have that airport. And they are doing really cool stuff and they continue to grow. And they're really important for all of us.
My mind, they are debt-free. That is, that's incredible.
Yeah.
Hearing no other comments. We're going to move on to item number 14, report on items from city staff, city manager's office.
Nothing tonight.
City attorney?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
City clerk? All right. So item number 15, could I get a motion to adjourn from our formal session?
So move.
Second.
Move by Sala, second by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right. So we are going to take just a five-minute little stretch and then we're going to come back for our work session. So, yes, we'll continue our work session. All right. All right. We are returning to our work session for February 4, 2025. And we are going to start with item, well, our last agenda item is going to be number five, 21 South Lynn Street Discussion. And we have our city manager here to lead us in that discussion. And also want to acknowledge that Counselor Josh Mo as we're accusing himself from this item. All right, welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am really excited to be moving this project into the next phase. And today we're going to present to you a, a summary of the three proposals for the 21 South Lynn Street property. But I want to start by hopefully saying something I'll say a couple of times during this presentation if I don't forget. And that's just how grateful I am to all the teams that submitted and to even those that were working on it, but, but didn't get across the finish line and didn't submit. There is a ton of work that goes on behind the scenes to be able to submit the, the quality of proposals that, that we got through this process. And it's not only time and effort, it's, it's, it's financial resources as well. So I'm really grateful and I think that speaks a lot about our community that, that we had multiple teams that kind of raised their hand and said, you know, I want to be a part of this next chapter in downtown Iowa City. That's, that's really exciting. So what we're going to be doing today, we're going to just give you a quick background on how we got to where we are today. I'm going to talk a little bit about the RFP document, just to reorient ourselves with what we specifically asked for. We're going to go through a very high-level summary of the three responses and then open it up for your discussion and, and kind of deliberation on the next steps here. So I think everybody's familiar with the site, but for those watching, we are talking 21 South Lynn Street as pictured here on the screen. And several years ago, US Bank, which previously owned this, you may recall there was a drive-through bank on this facility when it was a surface parking lot. They sold it to a out-of-state student housing development team that worked on a high-rise student-centric housing tower. That project made it all the way to building permit. That was ready to be built. But post-COVID, things changed for that company and they no longer were pursuing that, that project. That was kind of late 2022 and I think that project started to slip away from that team. Once it was known that they were not going to pursue their project, staff started to field some inquiries from potential buyers. And it was pretty clear to us that that was likely to transfer to another student housing developer that had similar intentions to build a, a high-rise tower. And in addition, we were getting a lot of inquiries about incorporating some of the properties immediately to the west of the site. You can see those on the, on the top there, but some of these properties up here, we were getting inquiries about what if we acquired these and demolished these? And that's when staff started to really pause and think, what, what do we want? Is this a moment in time where maybe the city needs to step in and, and help guide the development in a way that's going to be better for the long-term health of downtown? Both from the use standpoint, but also for just the, the economic standpoint as well. And as we, we reflected, you know, over the last 15 to, to 20 years, the city's invested quite a bit in the downtown and not just infrastructure, which we have and, and the public spaces, which we're really proud of. But we've been really intentionally trying to diversify the uses downtown. That means introducing new housing types. That means increasing hotel rooms, really trying to shift to a stronger balance of commercial uses and not just kind of the, the, the late night bar uses and really provide a, a downtown in which everybody feels like they're welcome, invited and have a place. And we thought about that with this property and ultimately with the council's support and approval, we decided to go out and purchase this property, which we did in August of 2023, with the intention to guide the project to a, to a stronger use than what we felt the market was going to produce on its own. And really what we thought about and what we initially talked about right after the time of purchase is let's reflect back on, on a couple of other recent examples in which the city did own property and we did pursue public-private partnerships to, to, for the betterment of downtown. And the most recent example, of course, is right behind you at the Chauncey. But you can also look at the Hotel Vetro and Bread Garden property, both cases in which the city owned the property and helped steer private development in a way that brought something new to downtown and also felt very accessible to everybody despite it not being a, a publicly owned property anymore. So that's certainly what we had in mind. And after kind of familiarizing ourselves with those projects, again, we set out on a, um, public engagement and, and kind of planning effort that took place from February to June, really talking to the public and trying to understand what the public really wanted to see in this particular location. We presented those results to you and had good feedback from you. And then we started working on the actual RFP document. And towards the end of summer, in 2024, we presented the RFP document, the Request for Proposal Document to you. We made some tweaks based on your feedback and were, was able to issue that in early September. During this time, you may recall, we also revisited the TIF policy anticipating that TIF may be requested through this process as well. And the council worked through those changes as well. So the RFP, as I mentioned, was released in September of 2024. We provided 60 days for a response. So those were due back in early November. And for the last couple of months, staff has been reviewing those internally, which brings us here tonight. Any, any questions on the history and project background? Okay, we'll jump into the RFP document itself. This is pretty wordy, but on the, in the blue side, that's taken straight from the RFP. We were very clear in the RFP, the purpose is to facilitate private redevelopment and very clear that we had the long-term interests of downtown in mind. And I think we got to continue to kind of center what, are we making decisions that are best for the, the long-term health of, of the community? We talked about the need to generate annual property tax income. And we just kind of forecasting tough budget times and knowing that some of these redevelopment opportunities can really provide a solid foundation that supports our services and our external partnerships with others in the community. And the, 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 the third piece of that talks about the, the contextual development, just kind of working in concert with everything else around it. So specifically, we called out your strategic plan. We called out the vision for downtown and our downtown master plan. And we talked about really what we were looking for in the site without being very specific, trying to give those teams an opportunity to interpret that themselves and present their best and most creative ideas. We did talk about active and engaging first floor use, really making sure at the street level that this property was, was very active. That was one of our major concerns with the student-centric housing high-rise would be that if you didn't live in that high-rise, you weren't really going to be engaging on that building, on that prominent corner at all, right? There wasn't going to be retail incorporated. There wasn't really going to be any commercial uses incorporated. It would be mostly amenities for the, the residents there. And we really wanted to, to look at this corner and say, it really should have a, a very active streetscape there. We talked about a mix of housing types and different affordability levels for the residential uses. The council really stressed high construction standards and leadership and climate action, as well as the contextual architecture. We also talked about the importance of the submitted team's experience and capabilities and making sure that the project was going to be economically viable and, and a good long-term fiscal benefit to the city. So just a reminder of kind of what to expect at this. This is a slide that you've seen a couple of times in our earlier presentations. As you work through this process, the details will get more refined. You'll see with all of the proposals, there's different levels of specificity. But all of the, all of the respondents had said, of course, we're flexible still, right? If the city, if, if a different priority emerges or another opportunity comes, everybody's somewhat flexible in this. So just, just know now, you, you may not have all the answers. What's before you are not fully designed buildings. They're concepts. And there's ability for us to work with the teams to respond to changing market conditions, different interests that may emerge that maybe weren't there several months ago. And all of the teams are open to those types of discussions. Okay, I think we'll jump into the proposals if you're ready for that. Okay. We're going to start with the Grand Rail and we're just going to do this in, in alphabetical order, just like it was presented in the, in the memo that you have in your packet. The Grand Rail proposal, as we've kind of said shorthand, also includes a number of other partners, includes Urban Acres, OPM and Axiom Consultants as well. And we're going to just kind of walk you through each of, each of these proposals at a high level. If you've got questions, feel free to jump in and, and ask for, for clarifications. They have proposed a mid-rise building, a six-story building with steel frame. They have proposed a mid-rise building, a six-story building with steel-frame construction and the goal of achieving lead silver. On the ground floor, they've anticipated 6,300 square feet of entertainment use. They do have letters of interest in their proposal from both the Engler Theater and the Stories Project. They have three floors of commercial office space. On the upper floors, there's letters of interest from OPN and ACT, and they've certainly expressed a willingness to accommodate the city office needs should we decide to pursue that on this site. The two upper floors, to round out the six total stories, includes 20 residential units. Of that, 16 proposed at market rate and four proposed to be affordable. There is a letter of interest from the Housing Fellowship in here in regards to the affordable properties. There's also a letter of interest expressed from the University of Iowa International Writing Program, who has an interest in acquiring some or utilizing some of the units for, potentially for short-term rentals to accommodate their program. There's also a rooftop amenity proposed that would serve the residential community. Staff has done some work to estimate what the total valuation for the property would be. We estimate this one to be valued at around $21.5 million. The proposal indicates an offer of $3 million to purchase the lot from the city, and at this time, they're not requesting any gap financing, typically tax increment financing. However, they have made it clear that should tenants need that in order for it to be viable, then we may have to work TIF into the project, either with those tenants directly or with the team. So you can think of whether it's the Engler Stories or other uses that may not be able to pay that market rate, that TIF may be needed to accommodate those types of uses. We'll just walk you through some of the images. I am not an architect, and I can't even pretend to be one. I am not going to describe the architecture to you. One of your next steps that I suggest is for the teams that you want to move forward, that you invite them to present, and certainly the architect teams can talk in detail about the architecture and how it fits in with the surrounding properties and the overall downtown district. I'll circle through these. A couple minutes to look at that. Got both the Washington Street and Lynn Street elevations here. And then we'll move into the floor plans. So over here, you'll see the one level of underground parking to support the residential uses, and then this middle one would be your pedestrian level, or what we call on the ground floor, and then you can see the entertainment space here that kind of wraps on this corner, goes down Lynn Street, and is serving a portion of Washington Street. The darker gray is going to be more of the corridor to service the residential and commercial users in that property. The second and third floor are presented over here. Again, this was presented as office space. And I probably will say this a few times again, I mean it with everybody, that they've all said that this is certainly flexible, right? If there's not going to be office demand for multiple floors, then they can convert that to residential, they can also expand and accommodate more if needed to. You see the fourth floor, kind of what a subdivided commercial space would look like, with a little bit of an outdoor terrace where the building steps back. And then on the fifth and sixth floor, you have the same floor plan with the apartment layouts there, and then the rooftop amenity space is depicted on the far right there. Once we walk through all three of them, in the memo, there was a summary table, we'll kind of end on that summary table, and we can compare and contrast if you want.
This one is showing one and two bedrooms. What is the, are there three and four bedrooms in their model?
No, not as presented, but I'm certain they would be flexible if that was a priority.
And did they identify if the affordable units were going to be one or two bedrooms?
I would have to get into that proposal, Mayor. I can look when we're done with this and see. I do believe that the affordable ones are noted on the pro forma, and I could look and see what those were designated.
I'll look back at it, but thank you.
Those are all certainly conversations, they would be flexible. I think they would, you know, I mentioned that the Housing Fellowship was noted, whether it was the Housing Fellowship or another nonprofit partner that they would work with, I think they would probably have more intentional discussions with them to see what they felt was needed in this particular location. Okay, moving to the Iceberg Development Proposal. The Iceberg team includes the Hodge Construction Group, Slingshot Architecture, McClure Engineering, and a couple of other partners as depicted on the screen there. It is shown as a 13-story building with concrete steel-frame construction. The building composition, so on the ground floor, they have showed 2,000 square feet of micro retail, you'll see that in the floor plans, and about 3,800 square feet of restaurant, retail, or entertainment space. They do have a letter of interest in their proposal from the Englers as well. They have five upper floors of commercial office space, and we'll see how that's kind of divided out within the building. There is a letter of interest from ACT, and they've indicated a willingness to accommodate city uses as well. That team has indicated that if all five floors aren't needed, they could shrink the height of the building, or they could expand the number of floors dedicated to residential units as well. Kind of the key component to this building are seven floors of residential, that would include 76 affordable senior units, and they would anticipate utilizing the low-income housing tax credit program to support those residential units. Again, as kind of thought right now, those would be dedicated to the senior population. Their intent is that the tenant's income would average 40% to 80% of the AMI, and at least half the units would be at the 60% area median income, that's the AMI area median income. With the LIHTC program, you get a minimum of 30 years of affordability, and depending on the ownership structure, certainly we have seen those extend beyond the 30 years in some cases. I talk about this in the memo, there are two different LIHTC opportunities, there's a 4% and a 9%. The 4% is what the pro forma is based on in this proposal, if you looked at that, that's an administrative award, meaning it's kind of first-come, first-served if you meet the criteria. There's currently about a year, at least a year backlog on those awards here in Iowa. There's also a 9% LIHTC program, which is a more lucrative tax credit, that's done on a competitive process, that's the LIHTC that we're most familiar with here in Iowa City. However, those are due, those applications are due to the state in February, so it's unlikely that Iceberg would make that deadline for this project. So I talk about that a little bit in the memo, that when you have a LIHTC project, there's certainly lots of advantages in terms of leveraging outside dollars, but it does oftentimes require quite a bit of patience and sometimes multiple years of applications to be selected, if you are fortunate enough to be selected.
Along that same line, because there are other funding sources that could be sought after, LIHTC, as you mentioned, typically requires 30 years. If, for some reason, the city did grant the, you know, $2 million lot purchase as well as a TIF for $7 million or $10 million, somewhere in there, can we require a longer affordability period, if that is a part of our contingency?
Yes, I mean, we own the property, we can require anything we want to. Now, the question becomes, is it feasible, right? Does that make the project in some way unattainable? Those would be discussions that we would have to have with the team, and that's going to really apply to all of the proposals, and whether we're talking affordable housing, whether we're talking about tenants who may need rental subsidies or build-out assistance, we talk about climate action components of the building, all of those things, we can absolutely push on and we can ask for more, but at some point, you know, the numbers start to fall apart. So as we get through this process, one of the things that we'll look for the council are, you know, what priorities are rising to the top, what opportunities are you seeing in these proposals that are most exciting, and we will absolutely work hard to ensure whatever those are. If it's permanent affordability, we would work to do that with all of the proposals.
And Iceberg is like, they are only focusing on senior units, or they are open to?
Correct. I think they could potentially be open, they have specifically proposed senior units, and we did not engage them on family units, but again, I think the team would be open to that. It's probably more of a reflection on how they saw the market in downtown and thought that the senior housing would be in higher demand, but I'm sure they're open to that Staff has estimated the total valuation at $24 million. That may seem a little low based on the scale of the property, but LIHTC projects are taxed a little bit differently, so it brings down the overall valuation during the compliance period, also puts it on the commercial side, which is good for us, so the taxable valuation is a little bit higher, but the overall valuation may seem a little bit low, but that's where we've estimated that to be. The proposal, again, is based on a 4% LIHTC, and they've suggested a $2 million lot purchase with a need for about $7 to $10 million in TIF, which, based on that valuation number, we would expect to take anywhere from eight to 12 years to pay off at that 100% level. If they shift to the competitive LIHTC, that 9%, which again is harder to achieve, that could lower the TIF significantly and change that overall financial picture for this project.
Is there a sense of how, you said significantly, is there a ballpark on, or is it too early to?
I think more than half would be our expectation. Both teams would obviously try to work to try to get that to zero, but I'm not sure if that's financially viable. This does not include subsidies for any other uses, so I mentioned the Engler's has a letter of interest in there. In talking with the Engler, we know regardless of what proposal it's in, they're probably going to need some help with build-out and with perhaps a rental subsidy going forward. So all those things are just factors that can push up or down on that TIF request. Okay, we'll look at some of the architectural conceptual rendings that were submitted. This was submitted just to show the context of a 13-story building within the downtown, so calling out the seven-story neighbors here with the Vogel House, you've got Plaza Towers at 14, you've got Park at 201 with 14, and so on. We'll get into some of the floor plans. There was not any parking proposed on this, so leaning on our existing parking facilities. You can see the ground floor concept here, here's that entertainment space, they listed it as restaurant/live music venue or anchor retail, so you see they're still very flexible in which way that would go. And then you see that micro retail down on Lynn Street right here. By micro retail, we're just talking about smaller square footages, we're not talking about any type of subsidized space, but by the nature of being small, it's going to be more affordable entry point for retailers. Again, it's not reflected as subsidized based in the pro forma. You can see you've got both the office and residential lobby here. So floors two and three, they had identified for city office space. Again, should we choose not to do this, these floors could be eliminated or potentially converted into the residential units.
In this proposal, no one will, it's not going to be condo-ed out, so it would all be rental, even for the city?
No, I don't think that's known at this time. It could be condoed out, so for example, are you talking this proposal specifically?
Yes.
Okay, then it probably would not be condoed out under this. The other, except maybe the commercial spaces, right? But the residential pieces would likely not be.
What about the city space if that's become city?
Correct. So the city, if we wanted to own our own office space in any one of these proposals, we could absolutely do that, we wouldn't have to lease it. I think we would have the flexibility to work with the teams to figure out what the best option is. This is the housing level, so it goes from level four, the only difference being level four is where some of the amenity space would be. You see a community room here, you see a patio and amenity space out here, and then the upper floors would all have the same floor plan here. The top level is shown as the ACT office space, so this would be a similar setup to what we have at the Park at 201. The Park at 201 is on the north end of the Ped Mall, right on Blackhawk Mini Park. It has a couple floors of office and then residential, and then another office level at the very top, this would follow kind of a similar type of offering with this space. Any questions on the Iceberg one right now? Okay, we're going to talk about the SLIDA Partners Proposal, which also includes Shive Hattery, Skydeck Capital, and Simeon Tally, and we'll walk you through that proposal. This is the most kind of defined proposal that we saw, the most level of detail, particularly on that first floor. So you have 6,900 square feet of flex entertainment, micro kind of kitchen, you have micro retail and an art alley. The proposal describes it in great detail, talks about it being the community living room, and the space has been dubbed Billy's at this time. It's clear that there would be a partnership with the Engler's on that space. The first floor would also include the primary entrance for the upper-level Stories Project, so there's about 9,000 square feet on upper levels for the Stories Project, with an opportunity for them to grow over time if needed, and also has office and commercial space in these upper floors. Quite a bit of mix of housing here, five upper floors of residential, we see 26 market-rate units, six affordable units, and 14 short-term stay, and there is a letter of interest from the Housing Fellowship for the affordable units, and we also see that letter of interest from the University of Iowa International Writing Program in this proposal as well. I skipped over the Stories Project pretty quickly, but there is a lot of detail in the SLIDA Partners Proposal, so as you spend some more time looking at this, if you're interested in learning more about the Stories Project concept, I would encourage you to look at that SLIDA Partners Proposal for that level of detail, and we can answer questions about that if you've got those ready tonight. We estimate the total valuation to be about $37 million, and the team has proposed a lot transfer of a dollar, so essentially no-cost land transfer, and they would anticipate needing the full TIF that's generated off the property for as many years as possible, probably, we would say probably in that 15 to 20 years range, based on what we can see in this. There was two different pro formas submitted, one that had kind of market-rate users in there, so if we didn't subsidize that space for Stories or for Engler, there is a remaining gap of around $1 million, that's estimated, and when you get into subsidizing that space for some of those prioritized users, that gap grows upwards of about the $5 million level there. We'll go through some of the images that were submitted. There's an art alley concept that's prominent in this one, and you can see that in this lower right-hand picture here. And you can see that in this lower right-hand picture here. Couple of the elevations. Did you see the underground parking? Okay, and we'll walk you through some of the floor plans again. This is the underground parking level right here. Then you move into that first floor. Again, a lot of detail on, on this proposal. There is a two-story venue back here. That's the Engler kind of performance venue. All tied in together to this Billy's space. And you see some of those micro kitchen units here designed to be, again, very accessible entry points for food providers that would work together with the Engler on the operation of this space. The art alley sits out in this area here. And then those micro retail spaces, even smaller than what you saw in the iceberg proposal here at 300 square feet would sit here on Lynn Street. The Stories Project entrance kind of comes in on the corner of the property right here. That second level, again, we've got the performance venue that's two stories back here. So there's a balcony area. You can see the Stories Project, which is spread out over a couple of floors to start, sits in this area back here. And then there's a kind of an emerging artist gallery seating area to round out that second floor. The third floor has the remainder of the story space as well as flexible office space. And then the fourth and fifth would include offices for the city should, again, we need to or want to pursue that particular option. The sixth level and seventh, eighth and ninth show the, the residential footprints right here. And then the, there is an upper floor roof and pavilion patio that's really designed to bolster the offerings of the Engler and the Stories Project or host other special events that are held in the building. Any questions on SLIDA partners proposal? Okay. This is the same table that is in your, in your memo. That, and all the proposals I should have mentioned upfront are available on the website now at icgov.org/21sln. So you can reference that as well. I won't walk through these. We just walked through these, but I think this is helpful for the discussion. So the, the staff is recommending that we move forward with public presentations of the Grand Rail and Iceberg proposals. And I, I do want to note that the SLIDA partners proposal is very impressive. And it's very clear that they put a lot of time into trying to understand what the public input that we gathered really was calling for, and they responded very well to that. But at the end of the day, we really did not feel that they presented a financially viable proposal. And we were pretty clear in the RFP that we really wanted to try to produce a, a property tax generating building that was going to be also kind of fiscally supporting of the city. And with the inability to pay for any of the, the land or recoup any of our land cost and the full encumbrance of TIF with a remaining gap that would have to be plugged in some way, shape or form, we really felt that it fell short of that objective as inspiring as it is. And I completely unintentionally dropped, missed letting you know that they proposed a mass timber building, which is, would, would be, you know, kind of an incredible construction technology to, to bring to Iowa City. It's an emerging, sustainable construction tech, technique that Iowa, the state of Iowa has seen very little of. I think Des Moines, there's a, a project or two, but I should have mentioned that when I walked you through their, their, their property there. But at the end of the day, we just didn't think it was a viable project. And in the effort of really focusing in on, on the two that we felt were viable, we are recommending that we not pursue any, any further with SLIDA on their proposal. Let's see, one thing, I, I did want to stress again. So what I recommend, you know, for a next step is to invite the teams that you wish to, to come forward and present publicly. I can present you a summary. You can read it in paper. But I can tell you, hearing the teams that developed the proposal present it and allowing them to introduce themselves to you brings a whole nother dimension to the vision and, and to the project that I think you would find beneficial. And I think that the public would find beneficial when, when giving you their input on which direction that you should go. So I, I do think that's the next step when you are, are ready for that. And then lastly, again, just keep in mind that at this stage, I think all the teams are, are indicating some level of flexibility. And it is an opportunity for you to see these and react in ways that can more clearly express where your strongest priorities are. And once you get to the point where you can select a preferred concept to move forward with, we would work with that team to try to make sure that we can meet those top priorities for you while still producing a viable project for, for, for the team as well. So I think we'll end it there. I'll leave this up for discussions. And let me know if you have any questions. Otherwise, I'll just turn it back to you.
Can you remind me, how much was the land again?
Four and a half million.
And, and if we want to sell the land that today, how much it will be?
Well, that depends if, you know, how we want to steer the project. We felt, and I still feel like four and a half million, the property would have sold for that amount. And we probably would have seen one of the, one of the groups that were inquiring with us about it come in and get it. So it would probably be a, a student housing type of project would be our best, would be our best guess. And I think we could recoup that cost. I, I, four and a half million is my best, my best estimate at this time. So when we're looking at these proposals, they're, they're producing something that the market may not otherwise produce, which was our goal. And we may not recoup all of our cost in doing that. Each one of these projects in that way is subsidized.
Yeah, that's why I want to come board it. What we're giving and how much we're getting from them. So we can choose which project, yeah?
And as we start to have conversations, I do wonder, you know, everyone has presented their proposals and, you know, their public process has been open, has been closed for other people. So what is the wiggle room that we, or boundaries that we would have if someone? Cause I hear they are willing to hear counsel and willing to present something based on, you know, some of our discussion today. But if it's significantly changed, I, I guess I need to know what those parameters are. Or is, are there any?
Yeah, I mean, I do think we, we should expect that these projects will evolve, right? This could take years to get from the RFP stage to a construction stage, right? We still have probably a year at least of design work to do, or the teams would have that type of work. So market conditions will change. And again, opportunities may change. You know, there could be a, an office user that all of a sudden is interested in downtown, which may expand the need for commercial office space in this particular location. It could be a particular retailer or, or something else that, that comes forward. So some of that's going to, going to, to change and we should expect that. Construction costs will change, right? Certainly kind of in those discussions now as, as tariffs are being pursued. So, you know, this is a moment in time slapshot or snapshot that is, is the best kind of proposal, but we have to expect that's going to change. I would say even bringing in new partners to the teams, right? I think the, the principal structure needs to stay the same. But some of these teams may find new partners that help them further their goals. I, I think that's okay, but there are, there, there will be a time air and I'm not sure if I can define that really well in which the project changes so much that it's not consistent with what was originally proposed. And that's where I would have a, that was where I would have a concern. So I'm just going to use an example here maybe to help illustrate this. If the iceberg project came back and said, you know, Lytech's probably not going to, not going to work, we'd rather do, you know, a major shift in the housing offering. That's a pretty big change. And that fundamentally changes how we would have assessed that initially. I think we'd have to have some conversations about that. But if they were to shift from a senior Lytech to a, a non-senior or a kind of family Lytech as we, as we refer to it, I wouldn't view that as a substantive change.
I would add, Mary, that I, I think since we're just selling land, we really do have a free hand for negotiating with the proposers as City Manager has described. I would say the only kind of guardrail is if for some reason the council were to upend the criteria by which the proposals were made, that would probably not be fair to those who maybe chose not to propose because they saw that we were offering those constraints. So short of something like that, which I would not anticipate, I think you're free to do what you wish.
To that, what has come before us, you know, has done so much due diligence in terms of thinking about what we put out in the RFP. And as you said, Jeff, where it was like, and, and I think you actually mentioned it at one point too, where it's like, you know, these, we gave enough shape to something, but then how that was expressed is in three very different projects. And, and so I think that as council, as we talk about it, we want to make sure that we don't just sort of redesign the projects at, you know, Franken style, you know, Frankenfurter kind of put like, oh, that's good and that's good and piece it all together because so much work has gone into this based on the homework that's been done. So, I mean, I just say that to, to counsel because it doesn't sound like that's a legal constraint necessarily. It, it does impact feasibility. But it seems also to, to, to give credence to the work that has been done because it took months and months to, to develop these plans. So we want to, I'm not saying that we take them whole cloth. I love that there's the flexibility of like, what are the needs? What do we understand needs to be as well? But, but to sort of redesign from within a project seems kind of unfair.
I think.
And, and not true to the, 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 the way that the RFP was put out. So I just.
I like that. The, the months of their design followed, which followed our months of deliberations on what things we were looking for. Yeah, I think if we decide to change what we decided at the very beginning, that's one thing. You know, I, I'll just quickly comment and compliment all three of these groups. When I, you know, when I heard we had three proposals, I was like, oh, I was kind of hoping for more. And I no longer, after I got a chance to really look at these, I don't feel the least bit disappointed. I just wish we had three street corners that were open. Because I think they, they, you know, I was, you know, they're all very different, but there was, there were components of each one that I thought were, you know, jumped out at me as, as unique advantages, you know? And it wasn't, you know, it was different kinds of, different kinds of things. So I actually do see a little bit of that Frankenstein mix and match. And whatever direction we go, because whichever one we go as a council, there'll be other ideas that will, hopefully they'll be able to incorporate. And I think it was also interesting that, that a lot of them had some overlap in possible partners. You know, I think that speaks to the, some really positive things about our community and community institutions and organizations and people that pop up in a couple of different places on here. And I just think that's, I, I found that to be really encouraging. Yeah. So I mean, just again, thank you to all of the, the, the groups that put this together, the outside groups that were looking at it and offering support or possible deals. You know, I, I, you know, I, I'm really excited about that. So.
And when we supposed to choose this one, like today, not today, right?
I think it's whenever you're comfortable. You, you certainly don't need to choose a proposal now. I think your next steps would be identifying which ones that you want to hear more from at this time. Understanding that you are asking them to commit more resources and more time and more energy to it. Staff has recommended that you, you hear directly from the Grand Rail and Iceberg teams, but ultimately that's your decision on which teams you hear for. And I think that's the next step. I don't, I wouldn't even suggest you do a whole lot of picking apart these proposals at this, at this stage. Cause I do feel like it's important that you hear directly from the teams that spent the many, many hours preparing this. They can tell their story a lot better than I can represent their story here before you. So that is probably the next step, whether tonight or at your next work session is to say, let's move forward with team A, B, C, whatever configuration that needs to be.
Come and present.
To come and present, just information.
What would be a reasonable amount of time, once, whether it would be tonight or our next work session, which I'd be kind of leaning towards the next work session. After that, what would be a reasonable amount of time to give these groups to prepare a presentation? I'm guessing that's, because as you say, if we ask for that for another group, we need to be serious about them as serious contenders. And because they're going to put some more time and effort into it. And so.
Yeah, at this point, we're not asking them to, to change anything. So I think they're probably ready to go with, with the, the two weeks notice, if two to three weeks between council meetings. So if you told me tonight that you're ready to move forward and you know who you want to hear from, then as long as they're available to present at your next meeting, we could do it at your next meeting.
And we say next meeting, but if, if it's okay, the next one or two meetings. Just, we need to look at the work session.
But we want like each meeting, one of them to come and present.
You, you could, I, I would do it both at one time. I would recommend you just, you, you do both at one time. Or even if you choose all three, all three at one time. If that means flexing your work schedule, your, your work session time a little bit, that's fine. We can give them time parameters, right? I don't want to give each group an hour. You're going to want to say, we're going to have 20-minute presentations or whatever, you know, whatever time allotted is needed. But I would recommend that you keep them all at the same cadence and you don't give one team extra time to prepare or react to something that previous team said.
Oh, sure.
Oh, yeah. That's a good point.
And it'd be good to compare side by side. I, I would find that useful.
Then both of them, if not next meeting, the meeting after, but I think next meeting should be.
Yeah, I, I think if we are having, in one, appreciate the three that has submitted. Very impressed by some of the items and some of what they presented. Of course, there are some questions about some of the, some of the things, especially when it comes down to what the city has been asked essentially for subsidies. But with that being said, if we're saying that we would entertain some changes to, you know, even the two that the city or that the staff has recommended, then I think it would only be fair that all three have that same opportunity if there's, if there's potential for change. I understand that the next, when they present, they're going to be presenting what's here. Can they, I guess this is up to the council. Can they even say, you know, this is what we might think about altering? Are people?
I think given that we're talking about them just presenting on what they mostly have done, that that makes a lot of sense to see all three. I do think that, you know, given the flexibility, I like the idea of having them all in the same room, honestly. Being, you know, the degree to which we've talked about wanting to encourage collaboration and sort of sharing of ideas. And this is a very public process. And so I, I like the idea of having them all do that presentation just to potentially spark more, you know, something more collaborative that could come.
The spirit in which I think you were, sorry, the spirit in which you, I think you were talking is that they get the opportunity to see the presentations of each other, which may spark ideas and may be able to move forward with some potential changes. I'm less inclined to say that essentially on the fly they would talk about, and we could incorporate this or this or this. I, I would want to just hear what they have and allow everyone within the teams to be able to hear what everyone has and then see where that goes. As opposed to having them project or speculate about potential changes that they could incorporate. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, we're sitting here saying that we'll be, we're open to flexibility.
Absolutely.
And I even heard the word collaboration, maybe there is some opportunity to, because I mean, there are some, you know, some things I like about all of them that I wish was in one proposal. So. So if we're talking about that right now, I think it would be very challenging not, for them to just present what's there, especially, you know, for the one that's not being recommended by staff. If they're just presenting what's there, I mean, we have a, you know, a huge deficit that they're going to be presenting on. So I guess personally, I think we, I'm comfortable with them, you know, certainly presenting, making the case of how they can bring this opportunity to the city, but if they felt like they can cram something in within their 20-minute time of, you know, of some hope from this conversation, I'm comfortable with that.
That's what I was going to say, is I think they're all listening right now, right?
Well, I guess it's a matter of, I think of it as more of a matter of, what is their comfort level in doing it? Is that, is it essentially fair to ask them to do that? Because this is essentially, whether it's two weeks, or what have you, that is having to pivot pretty quickly from things that they've been working on for months. So I do take your point, and I know that they're all listening, and that there will be probably some conversations, but I would just would hate that, in a way, that there's that extra thing that we want? And if a team isn't comfortable, or able to respond in such a quick pivot, that that would actually end up, I don't know. I think that there's opportunities, and they don't need to necessarily have it here. There could be some, like, yeah, we like the idea of X, Y, and Z in terms of future looking, and ways that we could pivot, but I guess to maybe keep it at a high level.
Sure.
And I see some of that conversation happening after we hear this presentation, right?
Yes, that's...
Because I have, you know, I mean, I've got in my mind already a list of things, all the way from aesthetic, all the way to the dollars and cents, to the, yeah, all of those things, but I feel like to start going off down those tangents now, before they have a chance to present what's there, and then ultimately, it'll probably be which of these three is closest, and would need the least amount of changes to hit, whatever, after I have more time to think about it, would hit with the things I like. And then they can incorporate those, maybe some of those other things, you know? So, I mean, that's kind of my, you know, having had since Thursday to look over these, that's where I'm at currently. You know, but that's probably what I foresee, you know, because like I said, there's definitely things I like and dislike about each one. I think they're all, overall, really cool, but yeah, no, I don't really want to say too much more until we let them have a chance to talk, without having to filter through and trying to play their guessing game, what are those, what are those, trying to second-guess what those five people up there on the council dais want, between now and two weeks from now, or five weeks from now?
I do think there's been tremendous value, though, and I want to commend staff on, like, just sort of forcing the scoping of subsidy through this process, right? By even just making that recommendation of saying, three really good, cool projects, one that is asking so much financially of us, we don't foresee being able to support that. I think even that exercise has been really, really helpful.
And even if we, like, for example, went by the staff recommendation of the one not asking, like, too much subsidy, I guess when I look at those two, when it come to height, it's completely different. Like, you said earlier, Jeff said earlier, you know, there is some changes could be easy change from, like, taking seniors to, but there is major change sometime. Are they open to those, like, major change? And that's why we need to hear from them.
Yep.
So I think we're kind of all saying, the next work session, that we can devote the whole work session? Well, you know, I don't mean, like, next time, the next time it fits, we can have a whole work session to devote to it, I don't know what's...
I could check with the teams and see. Obviously, we want to make sure that they feel like they have the time. I don't know, their vacation schedules, or other project schedules, that could be pressing for them. So we would try to get it done either the next meeting in February, or the first meeting in March, and I'll just work with the teams to figure out, I think, what would be best.
Right.
And we'll try, I'll try to, I want to make sure I capture this right. I'll try to limit the amount of kind of flexibility discussion, or did you land the other direction, to where if they have ideas on responding to different needs, that they should feel free to articulate those?
I think what I heard was, we're open to whatever they're comfortable with.
Yes, yeah. That there's not pressure to do it, but yeah.
Well, that's good, because I think a lot of the team, I think all the teams have indicated flexibility, so we'll let them kind of express that in their own words, and we'll go forward. My understanding, you want to allow all three teams to present? And is that 20 to 25-minute range sound reasonable?
I like the idea of keeping it consistent. Do we want to also program in a certain amount of time for Q and A? So we don't end up with somebody who presents for 20, and gets 20 minutes of Q and A, and then the next person is out of time, because we've run out of, we've run out of work session time, and they have to go after?
You're talking about, actually, guardrails on us? Whoa.
Wild, isn't it? But I would like to see, in the interest of comparing side by side, I would hate for a third person, or a second person, or whoever, have to go after a regular meeting, and some before.
Yeah.
That seems like that would also be, I mean, it's not the end of the world. If it happens, it happens, but if we can avoid that, I'd like to avoid it.
I think that would be good.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I think that seems equitable.
So are we thinking 20 minutes for a presentation, and then just allowing 10 minutes for discussion?
Clarification, maybe clarification questions, not like...
Yeah, because...
Yeah.
Yeah, just the clarification, like, I was confused by this. What did you mean?
Thirty-minute bear...
Total of 30 minutes per...
Total.
Yeah, total, which is 20, 10, what is it?
And if, I could come, even start like a half an hour early? I've got, I teach on Tuesdays, so I can't come too much early, but I could be here half an hour early. If that would be helpful to the group, I'm just going to toss that out there. I'm not saying we have to do that.
I guess what we can do is check in with people, check in with council, and see if that is possible for you all as well.
Sure.
Okay? All right, I think we're good. Thank you. Anything else on this topic from council? If not...
It's not even tardy, thanks.
If not, we are adjourned from our work session.
Thank you.
All right. Oy vey.